I call to order the regular board meeting, uh, the regular board education meeting on September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five at six thirty one P. M. in the boardroom of Oak Park Everglades High School. Please call the roll.
Mr. Brisbane.
Here.
Dr. Odell.
Here.
Mr. Arkin.
Here.
Mr. Gertz.
Here.
Dr. Livingston. Mr. Brandhurst.
Here.
And Ms. Williams Lee.
Here.
And I move to enter full session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dispensal of specific employees of the district for legal counsel for the district and independent contractors and civic volunteers, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. However, a meeting considered an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase transparency act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Collective bargaining, collective negotiation can talk today, collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. In litigation, when action against affected or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when a public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the court meeting. May I have a second?
Sure.
Please call the roll.
Dr. Odell?
Yes.
Mr. Arkin?
Yes.
Mr. Gertz?
Yes.
Mr. Brisbane?
Yes.
Mr. Brandhurst?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams Lee?
Yes.
I'm sure this will...
We do that.
And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Johnson for our student showcase.
Okay, we are excited to kick off the new year of regular board meetings and then we have introductory reports, our first two student showcases. I am going to turn this over, I believe, to Ms. Parker, or should I just call one of them up? No, you got it. Okay, we'll get two.
Good evening, everyone. We are starting the student showcases for tonight, and we have two great ones for you. The first is going to come through student activities about one of our international trips that was allowed to restart during the pandemic. And then we also have our one of our state finalists in the athletic arena. That will be coming up after that first coverage of anti-hockey. Hi, I'm here today on behalf of student learning and summer school. I am going to introduce our summer school class, our ecology that went to Costa Rica. So if you all want to come on up and Ms. Leyla? We have a slideshow as well.
Hey, everyone. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Alex Silva, and I was one of the chaperones on the Costa Rica field ecology course trip this summer. It was spearheaded by Christine McKittrick, but she was unable to be here this evening because she had been so late. So I'm going to just introduce the trip a little bit, and we have a couple of participants who are going to speak more to their experience. First of all, this trip was ultimately designed in order to help students learn about the ecology, conservation, and culture of Costa Rica in order to help foster homelessness. They compare their experiences living here in our forest area to what people experience outside of our country and also to think about how our swirles are different from those from other countries. This course itself included Sunday evening classes throughout the second semester, as well as some outings to places like Lincoln Park Zoo and Trailside Museum. Those were intended to help lay the foundation for what ecology is, what conservation could look like, and to allow students to get to know each other. And then this was followed by a non-day excursion to Costa Rica. From OPRF, we took 24 students plus four chaperones, and we actually had the opportunity to meet and travel with fellow students from a student from a school in Missouri that was held by a former OPRF teacher. So collectively, forty of us were on around Costa Rica, learning more about the ecology of the space and getting to know the continent. You can see a map I was turning there that gives you an idea of the different places we went to. Certainly didn't get to see every region of the country, but we had a great time.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Owens. I am a senior, but I was a company senior when I did this trip. We got to see a lot of cultures from a different country that weren't our usual. As you can see here, we tried many different fruits that we had never had before, like that spanking one. That one was really good. I think another thing we did was we also got to see the history of the place. So the aux card right here, you can see the picture, we saw a really massive one. But we also got to go to the place where they were originally created, when we got to see the water system and how they make it work and why it's so important to their culture and their community. Because the beauty of this handmade artwork is very important, you know? So we got a newfound appreciation for different things, also the church, you know? Not all of us are religious, but seeing how important religion is in this country compared to America, you know, very different, very nice. And again, other things that we did outside of Costa Rica in the classroom was, you know, we got to learn about the economics of different areas of Costa Rica. We did a newsletter in class, and you know, we presented it. And we took a lot of notes on learning about what, how people in this area act, how it's different than our area, you know? One thing that Costa Rica does is like they don't have a military, right? They put, they're like some of the happiest people in the world, you know? They have a very high literacy rate because all of them really goes into education, right, instead of the military. And so getting to see that in the like space scenario, you know, you really see what thrives there because of that. I really enjoyed the trip. I got a very fulfilling experience out of it, especially the culture. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Max Moss. I am now a junior. I was a sophomore going to junior on the trip. During the trip, we saw, I think, over seventy-plus species of different animals. It was truly breathtaking, the views and the smell, the fresh air. It was all really incredible. During one of our night hikes, we hiked that night with headlands, and we got to see animals sleeping up close, really personal. That bird on the right over there, the mott-mott, we saw that one sleeping, and I learned that birds don't lay down in their nests, and they actually stay under trees and sleep. During our beach trip, we got to see some crabs. The crab with the black shell there, that's the Halloween crab. It's a really cool decoration one, and it was honestly my favorite animal out of all of them. Throughout the trip, during our hikes, we got to see a bunch of different animals, like sloths, crocodiles, scorpions. But overall, I think this trip has really increased my personal, like, views on animals just because how special they were up close to me and the ability to see them in their natural habitat compared to, as you. And overall, the trip was really breathtaking.
Hi, I'm Charlie. I'm a junior, upcoming junior before the trip. In Costa Rica, they have a philosophy called Puravida, which is like living the good life. And we definitely experienced some of that in the trip with all the different excursions we went on, such as the whitewater rafting we did down the river, super, super cool. We did some zip line tours, just got to see all this forest and stuff from up above. We went on a crocodile expedition, never seen a crocodile before before that, super cool. Got to plant some trees, got to go on a hanging bridge hike just to see that this forest has just like overgrown all this stuff from up above, see all these birds and everything, and just bond with everyone else on the trip. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alice Stefan, and I'm a senior now, but I took the class my junior year and was an upcoming senior when I went on the trip. And I want to talk to you about the friendship we made, friendships we made on the trip, which is something you normally think of with a trip like this. You think of the culture, the ecology, and things we learned, but we also really bonded with each other. We, on the trip itself, we were gone for nine days, and we did not have our phones. So, which can sound kind of crazy for teenagers of this day and age. And I went to thinking it was crazy. I was nervous not to have my phone. I feel like I'm on it all the time, and that's how I connect with my friends, but we really learned to connect with each other. I personally went into it not knowing anyone, really, and enjoying the class with any of my friends. And so I did meet people along the way. We become more comfortable with each other. We roomed with two to three other people, so we became really close with them. And then everyone on the trip, we all became like a really tight-knit community. We still have a group chat in which we text each other all the time. We met people, like you said, twelve kids from St. Louis who we'd never seen before in our lives, and became really close with them as well. We played games with each other, we were swimming with each other. I remember the beach trip, we had so much fun. Music played in the water, like little kids all over again with each other. And yeah, it was so much fun just to bond with new people who I didn't before and go through these amazing experiences with a bunch of amazing kids who are using the same things at the same time. So this trip was, like other people said, really rewarding, really amazing. I think I learned a lot about Costa Rica ecology and also about myself through going on the trip. So yeah, thank you.
So hopefully that has given you a little bit of an idea of the type of experience these students were afforded being part of this course and this trip. This course hadn't run since before the pandemic, so we'd really like to take this opportunity to thank the board for making sure that this happened. And most importantly, to thank Ms. Angie Hopkins for everything that you did to make it happen. You've seen the life-alternation that people will remember forever, and we hope to make that same thing happen for future students. Well, thank you.
So we have Ms. Epsom come up, who is going to tell you about how we closed out last year with our state winning team.
Evening, everyone. I am proud to start off our year by celebrating one of our most accomplished programs last year, our girls softball program. They took, as you can see in the large trophy they were carrying, and they took third in state last year. I introduce you now, oh, and actually, not only did they take third in state with the gigantic banner they also walked in with. We were awarded the sportsmanship award for the state series, which is quite the accomplishment. It's for all teams that participate postseason, and we were elected the winner of the league race. So very, very exciting. I'm going to turn it over now to Coach JP Haglund, if you remember him, he's coach of the year and volunteer of the year. So many, many people here helping our girls be successful, and I'll tell you a little bit about their season.
I thank you for having us, and we'll go quick. Should be on a slideshow, and should all of Peoria and Suri. But anyways, anybody who knows our program knows that I don't really But anyways, anybody who knows our program knows that I don't really do anything. It's always just coaches who do work. So Jose Morales is with us today. Coach Keever is grading math tests right now. Coach Lenny is coaching volleyball game. Coach Bergold is starting to work with these youth hockey players in our area. And so they're always busy, but they somehow always make time to make our program special. I'm truly thankful for that. I first want to introduce the girls who are here today. We have six of our 21, modern college right now, so that makes sense. We have Ariel Sperlock, George Guedes, who grabbed the trophy right away, Charlie Carey, a freshman starter, a third-place student in the state, along with another freshman, Travis, they're charper. Avery Lane, Bella Austin, and Gabby Chesney. We had eight seniors last year. They're all at April All Academic, several scholarship winners, five are All-State. It's a career most for All-State several times. We have several juniors who are not here tonight playing football. One is doing a pass tonight and we have a couple who have like other practices. So we were mighty, this sportsmanship award, I just thought, that's really awesome. You know, this is the group that says thank you to every bus driver as we get on and off the bus. They thank the umpires, they thank, like, we cheered the umpires a couple years ago at state. I'm like, you can't cheer the umpires. So it makes it look like they're cheating on us. I think they might be, so we'll take that. But yes, it was a magical year. I'm so proud of these girls and the adversity they showed, overcoming adversity throughout the process. The team we beat in the third place game, we lost 16-4 during the season. So a 13-run turnaround to beat them 6-5 was pretty awesome in the third place game. So I'm very, very proud of these teams, of these girls and this team. And we're excited about the upcoming season. We got a lot coming back. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you all. Yeah, I'm excited now to introduce our, I believe she's here, we have our new student council liaison to board of education. Yes, we do. Sabrina is here. So Sabrina, please.
So I'm actually the student council vice president. I'm Michaela Marks. Sabrina, she's six, so I'm filling in for her. So you'll meet her at the next board meeting. So she gave me something. So my name is Michaela Marks. I'm the vice president of student council. I've been on student council since sophomore year. I'm a senior now and I'm also on our Steve drill. So currently, we are busy planning homecoming. This year, the theme is La La Land. We've also been planning our pep rally in which we are asking student volunteers from each grade and teachers to compete against each other in mini-games. We aim to increase student engagement with the rally and school pride while getting them excited for the dance. Moving on, many students and teachers have concerns about the scanning ID doors in the morning. The lines have improved a lot since the system was implemented, but the time the doors like shut is obstructing students' ability to learn. Instead of coming in a couple minutes late when they are walking through like their usual doors, like door 10 during the, in the back, they're forced to spend like upwards of 15 minutes walking around to the main entrance. So all the construction on the south side prohibited students from taking shorter paths to the main entrance, extending the amount of time of class time they are missing. To fix this, we asked the doors to open like five to 10 minutes after the bell rings, cutting down the time students are absent or late so they can get to their classes faster. And that's it. Thank you for listening. And Sabrina will be here for the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Michaela, you did a great job in your presentation. All right, I have a few super potential announcements to share. First, congratulations to the OPRF marching Huskies. They set a new school record for the Amos Alonso Stag Marching Jammeru, Jammerie, excuse me, where they placed second overall out of 14 bands. It was a tight leaderboard with OPRF placing first place by just over one points. In addition, Huskies tied their berth in visual general effect, one of the hardest categories to win. They placed second also in drum majors. So congratulations, marching Huskies. We want to give a big kudos to science teacher Stephen Trappettium, whose research will be published in the American Biology Teacher, a peer-reviewed journal from the National Association of Biology Teachers. He also will present at the association's national conference in October. Stephen and his collaborators' research focuses on how the necessity of teaching simplified models of scientific concepts can inadvertently perpetuate common misconceptions about the topic at hand. You all got that? Using research-based findings about such misconceptions, they develop bite-sized interventions that teachers can easily incorporate into their lessons to check whether students are accurately grasping learning concepts. Congratulations, Stephen. And finally, oh, I also wanted to give a shout out to English teacher Rex O'Daly. His role as the chair of the secondary section steering committee for the National Council of the Teacher of the Year has had some wonderful benefits for OPRF. NCTE visited OPRF on Back to School Mic to capture video footage of Rex with his parents. Through that visit, they learned that we teach the Odyssey graphic novels to our freshmen. Gareth Hines, the author, is a good friend of NCTE and has agreed to a free Zoom with our freshman class. NCTE also reached out to Penguin for a donation to the Hemley Group and they are interested in donating some of the titles that date on it. So congrats to Rex and thank you for your leadership there. I'm pleased to announce that Oak Park River Forest High School has been ranked 34th in Illinois and 793rd in the nation in the latest U.S. News and World Report Best High School ranking. The rankings consider factors such as AP participation, exam pass rates, math, English, science proficiency, graduation rates, and outcomes for underserved students. And last but not least, I want to give big graduations to our District 200 Board of Education, which has been recognized for its exceptional governance practices by the Illinois Association of School Boards. The board is one of 42 Illinois school districts to earn the school board governance recognition, which honors effective governance behaviors and a commitment toward obtaining the knowledge that's still necessary to effectively lead the district. So congratulations to our seven board members here and all the work that they have done. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Ms. Evans, employee status. We're going to now move into our recognition for September. So let's turn it over to Ken. I'm sorry.
All right. First, we would like to congratulate Francisco Kiko Pachura, special education teacher, who was selected as the teacher of the month. Here's some of the highlights from the nominations. Mr. Pachura, a special education teacher, is praised by students as kind, patient, and funny. Simplifies hard subjects, creates lasting memories, organizes field trips enjoyed by all. Congratulations, Ken Kiko. I see that, I believe you're on line, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Would you like to share any, any words with us, Kiko?
Sure. I just want to thank the board and the committee and the administration and appreciate being shouted out by the students that I work with. So really appreciate it and thank you to the high school for everything.
Thank you so much.
Next, we would like to extend our congratulations to our employee of the month, Katie Mark, theater tech and support this season.
She is back here unfortunately, but she is performing in a comedy festival tonight. But she wanted me to thank you and she gave her best regard.
So I read the last citation. Here are some of the highlights from the nominations received for Mark. Theater tech and design teacher Katie Mark was nominated as one of the best teachers subs students had ever had. They are consistently supportive, willing to demonstrate new aspects of theater tech, and put tremendous effort into their classes, effort that students deeply appreciate. Congratulations again in the essential, Mark.
Thank you. We will now move to public comments instead of public comments. So comments, we have seven in person. And once we will, we will actually afford to be around with the board to see this. And as we move to public comments, please limit comments to matters within the jurisdiction of the board of education to three minutes. We will keep track of time, so please not be offended when I cut you off at three minutes. If there are things that you would like to continue to share, you can definitely send them to us. But just be respectful of time and other things that are being done. We will keep the comments to three minutes. And also keep in mind that this is not intended to be a dialogue with the board. Any questions or any follow-up that's needed, you will receive a response from the board to any specific questions within two weeks of this meeting. And with that, Ms. Evans, I'll turn it back over to you to get started. Thank you for sitting with me. So we are first people to attend is Ms. Mercy Hines.
All school board members, my name is Mercy Hines. I live in 2201, I've been in Oak Park for 35 years. I have a son to attend Oak Park. I'm here today to discuss equity. I was a member of ALBO, African-American Parents for Purpose Leadership in Education. Also a member of CEE, Committee for Equity, Excellence in Education. My concern is about equity. That was a concern 30 years ago, 35 years ago. We start, ALBO started this program as a result of getting equal rights for African-American students. What do I mean by that? It had something to do with AP classes and primary classes. There were not enough seats, there was not enough room. So usually, the African-American student at that particular time was denied interest. So parents, 200 to 300 parents in 1983 to 1985 until now, decided to protest that in an educated way to make sure the school board had more resources for all students. Why was this important? Because, why was this important? Because when you excel or when you advance, you learn, you learn your history. So as a result of that, we cannot deny students exposure and that's what was done. We are here today to make sure this continues. Previous school board superintendent, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Previous superintendent, Dr. Prue Adams, and the school board at that particular time, prior to, that was in 2016, prior to Dr. John, the council board, was very, very aggressive and instrumental in helping us move forward with this program. And what we want to say today is to let you know what's going on and we hope, we hope that you will support us. I know, how would you feel if you had a daughter that came to school and you wanted that AP class or you wanted something and that particular student was denied? Not a result of, as a result of violating, but for other reasons, especially if there are not enough seats. So that's one thing I would like the school board to consider. I would also have a passion that you allow yourself to learn, to involve yourself with education for students, how they learn, what happens, where they're coming from. And then when you see us in the community, we can have an educated conversation with who you don't know. I see a push in that direction. We know you don't know, so I have to conclude. I have about four more pages here, but. So there are others that will come behind me to discuss this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Our next speaker tonight, this was the Jewish family.
Thank you. I go slow now. Am I audible? Yes. So first of all, firstly, in fact, in 1998, I did a, when resources began here and I came away with the work idea that this is a jewel in the crown. It was in 1998, saying some of the same problems are still appearing in, this is 2005, right? 2005. So I begin with that, with that notion, that I'm still looking for everyone, well, people to answer the question, well, who, which crown is built, I mean, what students are elevated and what students are not elevated? And how do we deal with the mechanics of that? So I just began with this one notion about the tension between qualitative and quantitative messages, research, whatever, the prole, so those two, and how they are sometimes used and people don't understand what's going on with them. So when I read the final report and I saw the yellow line once again of African-American students way down under all of the other bodies, it was, it reminded me of a question. So again, I am a proponent of detracking. I want to follow the record for that. And one reason why is because, well, I was a part of the team that wrote the, now I use a report on reparations here. But we did two years doing it, two years. And my main concern was to go back, I went back 50 years into the report cards of this school and I found that there were kids residing in the 40th percentile for a long time. It seemed like forever, 40th percentile. So what's a 40 on a grade? Okay, got me that's it. So time moves ahead and you think that, well, this is going to change. And there are a lot of people here working for change. And there doesn't seem to be a core around how, do we really want the change to occur? The mechanics and systemic structure of beyond who we live, you know, the old time country we lived in, but you're with or you're not. So there were an enormous amount of students at the 40th percentile. They remained, too many students are at the 40th percentile.
Mr. Bailey, 33 minutes are up.
Oh, I had.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, it's just the last few points. Very quick. So I, I'm advocating that we do start a council, an advisory council, with another element built in, which would create a liaison between the community and the powers that be that deal with all of these machinations between the qualitative and quantitative outputs of what our peers are really doing. Thank you very much and thank you for your kindness.
Thanks.
Three minutes, so fast.
Thank you, Sabrina. Our next speaker is one is Georgiana Davis.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Georgiana Davis. Let's see, I moved here in 1965. And my daughter went to this high school and my grandson went to Willows School. So I have a letter that I'm reading from a parent. She wrote this letter. Her name is Nancy Alexander and she wanted you to know how she felt about the honor track program that you have. Good evening, the board and all present. I'd like to comment on the need for specific tutorial support for the freshman all honor program. When my son entered Oak Park River Forest High School in 2005, he was placed on the honors track based on his standardized test scores. He was also placed in a special presence. He was also placed in a special freshman study hall designed to support minority students on the honors track. The study hall was about fifteen students and the assigned teacher had to build a relationship with each student and their families, follow each student's grades and assignments on Skyway, intervene with the teacher and or family if there was an issue, give specific subject-based homework help, and reteach when needed. The study hall was subject-based, one focused on math, another on language arts and history. The study hall teacher helped students from falling through the cracks as they emphasized how to teach Skyway, those grades and assignment. How to approach a teacher for help, clarification, more time, had to be navigated, how to navigate the school, how to get involved in clubs and activities. There was no advisory at that time. The support was discontinued in junior year for all participants by design. The idea being after two years of support, the student should be more mature, independent, and no longer need of that support for my son was false. The discontinuation of that support changed my son's grade and made him last, his last two years, though according to I through, a chaotic struggle while he also prepped for ACT and SAT exams, applying to colleges and competed nationally in gymnastics to qualify for a sports scholarship. The assumption that junior students have figured out how to keep up with their honors and AP courses is also false. As a substitute teacher, I have seen juniors struggle to log into an AP practice test and unwilling to walk fifty feet down to the hallway to the testing office to ask for help with their registration. I have seen juniors in honor classes unclear about what.
Ms. Davis, your group is up, so please pause.
Okay. So, well, I'll just do the last paragraph. A structured, individualized, curriculum-driven, skill-based study hall can make all the difference in the academic life of an honors student at Oak Park River Forest High School. What you currently have is not a working, is not working. Please refrain from shoving current offerings to make study halls more aligned with the needs of the minority students on the honors track so we can keep them there. Respectfully submitted, Nancy Alexander, ten thirty six North Austin Boulevard, Oak Park.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Our next speaker is Mr. Jim Schwartz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Fortes. I'm a community member, educator, future OPRF parent, and a member of the committee for Equity Excellence in Education. First, I want to thank you for your service as school board members. As an educator, I know how much time that takes. We're asking you, as the district commander board, to create an authentically independent curriculum equity advisory group that sets and monitors time sensitive goals to ensure ongoing improvements in the freshman all honors curriculum. The curriculum equity advisor group would be made up of students, families, teachers, and community members, and OPRF curriculum leaders such as Dr. Hester. The group would be charged with reviewing the effectiveness and responsiveness of curriculum and instruction at OPRF by looking at first instructional data such as grades, test scores, and classroom observations; second, studying research on best practices; and third, engaging in conversation with students and families. The curriculum equity advisory group would build and maintain a connection with students and families, especially those who have been and are still marginalized by the school's practices. According to the Illinois Family and Community Engagement Framework, family engagement means working with the family as a unit to focus on student learning and development. Focusing on student learning and development requires meaningful two-way communication with families, not just informing, but also listening to learn about families' needs, concerns, and ideas while evaluating their perspectives in the learning process. The original proposal for the freshman all honors curriculum included a body such as we are proposing and administrative work on such a body, but that work has never completed. The curriculum equity advisory group would be composed of stakeholders across the community, including teachers and administrators. It would not usurp teacher professional expertise around content and content, but would supplement them with the voices of those whom the school and district serve. This body would report its work to the school community, the administration, and the board. Successful tools entail the collaboration of elected school boards, educators, students, and families. We must do more institutionalized conversations and decision-making across these groups, especially about curriculum and instruction, the areas that are most vital to the success of an academic institution. District two hundred board, we have to create the curriculum equity advisory group to advance the cause of improved supports and experiences for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Our next speaker is Mr. Tony Dusty.
Short walk, it's much easier. Hi, John, Anthony. First of all, I thank you for your extraordinary work. This is, John, I wish I knew one in addition to your regular life. It's important, it's vital. I know my children went here and graduated. It was a great experience for them. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to embrace the two proposals in the petition that many in this room signed, went around the community and advocated for. In doing so, I remind all here tonight at the recent election focused on equity and this very program we're talking about. I want to also remind you that the community rallied, rallied to the four candidates who ran on those principles. Three of you are sitting here tonight, and the rest of your colleagues join in that dedication you expressed. Over the past year, C has met multiple times with each person at this table. It was not more than once, talk to me and I'll make sure it answers. Those conversations were rich. You were open-minded, you were appreciative and concerned. You appeared ready to do something. We were grateful. Tonight, C, with our friends and allies, this room, with hundreds of supporters who signed the petition, declare that it is now time for you to do what you said you believed in. I want to say a few things about the evaluation presented later tonight. Experts in the field of education and all other social service fields know that evaluations work best when they have two components, qualitative and quantitative measures. The first two evaluations of this program did that very thing. They represented excellence, but you knew that's what the evaluation was about. This evaluation being presented tonight shows some positive metrics. Unfortunately, the racial disparities persist. Why could you abandon the immediate and real feedback of our teachers, our students, and parents as was represented in the first two evaluations? That is not equitable. That is living by numbers, as important as they are, they are not life. So as I am tonight, I want to urge you to do two things. To take all the evidence we assembled, your own very evidence reports of Dr. McKee, evaluations that you said you believed in, that I will finish. Two hundred and fifty people who aren't here. We also, as Mr. Schwartz said, believe you should do something that begins to at least approach in some way the imagined foundation that looks like a corporate entity online. We're asking for something that's reasonable, that's healthy, that will make this a better place for all children. Curriculum equity advisory group. Thank you for your perspective.
Mr. Anthony, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Byrd.
Good evening. I'm Mary Byrd, member of the Oak Park community for thirty three years and a parent of three OPRF graduates, and also member of C. First, as other folks have said, thanks for all your time to the board members, because it is quite a commitment. And thanks for the ongoing commitment to the all-freshman honors curriculum, a landmark equity initiative. Thanks also to everyone who came out tonight, put up your signs, who have supported this equity initiative. We believe that if our requests are granted, we can lift up all students in the all-freshman honors and particularly students who have the capacity to achieve in this course but need extra support. Students who disproportionately are students of color, are black students, are brown students. We also believe that the curriculum equity advisory group will keep a steady eye on the issue of equity within our curriculum. Board members, in seeking this action, I want to quote a former board member. When racial gaps in ISBE report were discussed at the twenty twenty two meeting, Cabrike Henry said, "It's not the capacity. It's not about being able to learn, it's other factors." And that statement's important in context like, what are those factors? What are we doing to learn about them? What are we doing to provide the needed support? Are we making decisions about our resources in equitable, transparent, and purposeful ways reflecting the high, the high school's mission, vision, and value statement? Our budget reflects our values, they highlight what we consider important. Since twenty eighteen, according to school documents, the board has transferred over fifty million from the general fund, also known as the education fund, to the capital fund for voter unapproved capital projects. The fund transfers were often made with the declaration of the administration. When some of us raised concerns about equity, we were assured, quote, "We can do both," meaning we can build new and improved facilities and provide appropriate supports to all our students. But we are not doing both. We certainly can't tell our students or the family of all freshman honors that we're doing both. In reviewing a twenty twenty three report on the all-freshman honors curriculum, former board president Tom Cosby said in cold, "To fail a class is not good for anybody. That tells us we've got work to do." Yes, we've got work to do. We must provide appropriate support for our students, particularly our black and brown students in all freshman honors. We must establish and adjust budgets so that they reflect our stated commitment to equitable education. We must establish an independent advisory group to study, support, and monitor equity-related curriculum. And we must lift up all our students. And in doing so, educate the Oak Park River Forest community about the capacity of all our students, particularly black and brown students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. And our last speaker tonight is Mr. Chris Thomas.
Good evening, board members, neighbors, and friends. My name's Chris Thomas. I've had the privilege of calling Oak Park my home since nineteen eighty nine. Graduated from Penham High School, but I do have brothers and sisters that graduated here. And I have a seventh grader that hopes to attend here as well. In addition to being a lifelong resident, I run a nonprofit called Your Passion First, where we engage with and mentor about three hundred and fifty youth per year and also serving as the co-chair of Walk the Walk, which is a grassroots initiative dedicated to addressing policies and practices in our community. These roles give me a unique vantage point. I see both the challenges our young people face and the incredible potential that they carry when given the right support. That's why I'm here tonight to speak about the urgency of accepting the recommendations to strengthen support for the freshman all honors program. Seven years ago, this board committed to restructuring the freshman curriculum in order to dismantle tracking practices that had excluded black and brown students from advanced course work. The freshman all honors program was bold step towards that. And now, in its fourth year, we've seen it open doors for many students of all racial and ethnic backgrounds. But we also know the truth. Our students need more support. Every evaluation, every listening session, every report has said the same thing. Parents have asked for more, researchers have documented systemic harms. Our own district data has shown that post-pandemic supports are more necessary now than ever. My hope is that these recommendations are acted on with expediency because our kids' futures are at stake. If we do not act, the performance gap wide, black and Latin student grades will stagnate, enrollment in advanced courses will plateau or decrease, and the progress we made will begin to reverse. But if we act now, the story changes. We can decrease freshman behavior rates starting this year. More students will stay on track for graduation in twenty twenty six and beyond. Enrollment in advanced courses will grow across all races. And equity in education will become a reality, not just an aspiration. Ticking calls for two clear actions. Provide more effective, co-designed supports for students in the freshman all honors program and establish an independent curriculum equity advisory group to ensure accountability and collaboration among students, families, educators, and leadership. This is not about whether our students are capable. They are. This is about whether we, as a community, will give them the resources, structures, and support they need to succeed. I urge you to adopt these recommendations. Let's not play, let's act now, because when our kids succeed, the community thrives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We will move now to the consent items on our agenda. Oh, forgive me, thank you for that. So we're gonna back up for a moment because we will have a public hearing on our FY twenty six budget. And are there any, are there any comments, Ms. Davis, for the? Thank you very much. And so the FY twenty twenty six public budget was presented in kind of form on August seventh, twenty twenty five, at the committee of the whole meeting. And the final version of the budget is presented for public hearing and formal adoption at this evening's meeting. So at eight eighteen PM, we're gonna call this public hearing to order on Thursday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, for Oak Park and River Forest High School history two hundred and twenty five community budget. This budget was placed on display for public inspection on August seventeenth, twenty twenty five, for thirty days, could say code. Notice of this public hearing has been posted on our website and appeared in the Friday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty five edition of the Chicago Tribune. And we do not have any comments regarding our twenty five, twenty six budget. And if there are no comments ever made regarding the budget, we will now close the public hearing for the budget.
Page nineteen.
At eight nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Now we'll move to our consent agenda. And are there any consenting items that board members want to pull for discussion?
This next poll, I have a.
Yeah. Are there any others? So I move to approve the consent items as follows. B, approval of personnel recommendations, including new hires, assignment changes, transfers, visa accesses, resignations, and retirement as presented. C, approval of a following policy for second rear action. Two point one two five board member compensation. Two point two zero dash eight exhibit board education records maintenance requirements and FAQs. Five point two two zero six days vacation holiday leave. And seven point three zero five frequent access consumption and head fees. D, approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty six cyber insurance policy would converge. E, approval of a twenty twenty five, twenty six mass transit exclusion. F, approval of a list of authorized depositories for the twenty five, twenty six school year. G, approval of the naming recognition recommendation and agreement as presented. H, approval of a July twenty twenty five verdict report. And I, approval of the check disbursements, financial relusion. And I, approval of the check disbursements, financial revolution, and payroll revolution as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Could you please call the board?
Mr. Brian Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Bird? Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Dale? Yes, Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Cardigan?
Yes.
And Ms. Woychuk.
Yes. And now, we will move back to item A for discussion of the open and closed session meeting minutes of August nineteenth, August twenty-first, and September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and a declaration that the audio tape in November twenty twenty-three will be destroyed.
Okay, so the reason I want to discuss this is because I noticed at the last meeting, when meeting minutes came up, they no longer referred to individual board members said this, et cetera. And I thought last time, oh, that's just the one, one topic. And I saw the end of the slide, so I just want to get the background on that change.
I can speak too, don't you mind? There was a recommendation that we received earlier this school year. It wasn't a policy change, but it was a recommendation that came from
Press Plus.
Press Plus, of course, best practices for minutes. And it was for the types of minutes you now see, right? I mean, instead of our paraphrasing, right, and summarizing, rather than providing something verbatim. We brought that conversation to our policy committee for conversation based offices. I'm sorry?
And it was approved in August.
Oh, thank you, and it was part of, thank you, Lisa. And it was part of a policy that was in August, I was around the month, so thank you, Lisa. But that, that's what it is, it's going to be recommended by.
So that was one of the line items in the policy spreadsheet, we got it back in August. Remember that policy committee first?
I remember the conversation, talking the conversation that Press Plus recommended as the law, that rather the line by line, state by state, yeah, that they're traditionally best practice for school boards that Press Plus all the reasons for that. Welcome to the best practice. Well, first of all, I should say, actually, what we had done with that policy was actually our policy, what we had been doing here. You know, the practice was, was different than what the policy was in practice. It was just a regular kind of update through Press Plus. And I think the rationale, particularly now, as we discussed it as a team, why we felt comfortable with that, was because in this day and age, right, we have access, right, to our, our meetings, right? Various markets that show you now we are so, whereas this one, the summary is simply, really, valuable.
So it helps the, helps the administration also?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I don't have a strong feeling about it, I just noticed that historically, when I go with those minutes, I'm just skipping from my own name, then making sure I got them captured accurately.
Yeah, fair, fair.
So, okay, thank you for the feedback.
Any other questions about this? Then with that being said, I approve to, I move to approve this, I'm sorry, to approve item A, approval of open and closed session minutes of August nineteenth, August twenty-first, and September eleven, twenty twenty-five, and a declaration that the audio tapes in November twenty twenty-three will be destroyed.
Second.
Follow up. Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Cardigan?
Yes.
Dr. Hale? Yes, Mr. Warren was.
Yes.
And Ms. Woychuk.
Yes. Our next action item is approval of our budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So, I move to approve the budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year as presented. And a second. And please follow up.
No discussion, I'm sorry, discussion, no, my, sorry, any questions?
It is and my first question, if you could give us kind of a a brief overview of what items, what significant items have changed from when we saw this last
August. Sure, I'm, I'll let Brian go into specifics. The budget, as it went through kind of a final refinement between the tentative process and the final budget process, we saw an improvement in the budget with an N E fund balance. Originally, it was thirty-one point nine percent was our N E fund balance. Now, we're just over thirty-three percent. We had one revenue area that we expected to decrease. The, we were using projections at the time. Since then, actual data has been released for us. And then, expenses were really influenced mostly by the adjustment to, that they were all true up that happens between the two budgets, first of our projections.
Any questions about the budget? Please follow up.
Yes.
Ms. Cardigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Hale? Yes. Mr. Warren was. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Ms. Woychuk.
Yes. And our last action item is approval of resolution recognizing the twenty twenty-six semifinals for the National Mira Scholarship Corporation. May I second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Just about how we, once we approve this recognition, in what other ways are these students lifted up or recognized?
Yeah, we have a recognition for the students, you know, I did it. We do that shortly after the word comes out. So, there's that, and of course, there's the value that this has for us for the long term. Oh, and I should say, the graduation programs.
And if you have any attempts to actually qualify, which is exactly, pretty amazing. Any other questions for discussion? Follow up.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Dr. Dale? Yes. Mr. Warren was.
Yes.
Mr. Cardigan?
Yes.
And Ms. Woychuk.
Yes. And that concludes our action items for tonight. We are going to now move to discussion for the freshman curriculum. Dr. Johnson, will you hear?
Yes, I'll, I'll kick this off. I'd like the members of my team to come on up, in addition to me sharing the information here. But we also have Chris and McKee, our coordinator of learning analytics, who's played a key role, and as well as our assistant superintendent, Dr. Jen Hester. Term context that she learned, and you took her.
And then, as every, getting to the refreshing, I would ask for us, my fellow board members, if we can go through the whole presentation, just to give us an opportunity to just see the big picture before we get into questions for Dr. Johnson and the team.
Okay, you want to click? All right, sounds good. As we get started with this, there are a few things I want to share, just right off the bat. First of all, I want to give just a little bit of the historical background here, just officially for the record. So, this really began in its current iteration. Conversations go back decades in our community and our district. But in this current iteration, beginning in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the district was preparing to implement changes as part of the curriculum evaluation that we began discussing and planning for in the eighteen, nineteenth school year. And that evaluation really found four primary things. Number one, there was inconsistency in learning experiences between course sessions in the same subject and level of the freshman. So this is two sections of honors, two sections of college prep. There was inconsistent curriculum articulation between college prep and honor sections of the same course. Grading practices vary across sections and levels as well. And as a result, students often enrolled in college prep courses as freshmen, and as freshmen, excuse me, and stayed in college prep courses in late years despite producing scores in the PSAT that suggested they were capable of doing higher level courses. These practices I just described contributed to outcomes that were predictable by race and other demographic indicators. Some reason for our district to continue these practices, given that discrepancy and those patterns and those outcomes. And so, detracting from your courses in English History and Science was part of our response to those findings. What we have here, and we will be sharing today, is the third time we have brought this review of the freshman work to the board for consideration. This one's a little different. Why is it different? Because it's the first time we've had students who have gone through the state-required standardized testing. Unfortunately, for, you know, simplicity of data tracking, the state shifted at the exact same time from the SAT to the ACT. We're going to talk about how we managed that, just a little bit in the report. But it does give us a chance to take a look at both access and outcomes. And so, in order to approach this report for this school year, it's the, we really focused on two overarching questions. I want to be clear, too, that this is year three in this process. What we're really looking at is the first cohort who's going through junior year, and some information that we see for kids who have gone subsequent years. It's hard, at this point, to come to any sort of really clear conclusions. This is exactly what this is and what it will be from here on out. But it actually, but it does give us some really good formative information about how this has progressed and how we kind of see this going forward in the next, the next few years. So the first question we looked at really aims at the lever that we are working. Curriculum evaluation, like I described, that the lever we're really looking at is sourcing of students. It's access of students to freshman honors courses. That was really the, that is a lovely change. Now, I want to be clear, we're talking about English History and Science. Those three subjects are very specific. In order to ask ourselves, are we doing the thing? Are we increasing student access to rigorous course experiences as a result of detracking? We have two indicators, freshman enrollment in honors courses before and after curriculum change, and sophomore who senior enrollment in honors courses before and after the curriculum change. And the next slide, we'll take a look, the first quick look at this. This is just a very kind of quick, crude look at it. And this is, you know, the range of score, the range of scores, the range of percentage of access for freshman honors courses before, on the left-hand side of the screen, which is between thirty-eight and forty-seven percent. And we see that shift eighty-three and eighty-five percent after that, after that shift. So, the idea that we have a large number of students who could, you know, who should be enrolling in honors courses, just from a simple, simple measure, we can see here that that effect has happened, that the percentage. If you go to the next slide, we see that exact same data tease apart demographic. And what we see here is a dramatic increase in enrollment in honors courses across our demographic spectrum. We do see, as has been pointed out, that there is disparity between, between different demographic groups. Prior to detracking to be specific, let's talk about, I'm not going to name all of these groups. And there are data tables at the end of this presentation in the penics, so you can pick a look at the exact numbers. But we have, let's go forward, let's take a look at our white students, for example. Roughly about fifty to fifty-five percent of our white students were enrolled in honors classifieds of this, that had moved up to somewhere in that, in that ninety percent range. And for our Black students, where it had been in the, below about ten percent, up to twenty percent just before the tracking, that it moved up to hovering around the sixty percent, sixty percent mark. And so, what we really see here is an implementation of what we put in place because of deliberately, because we knew based off of test scores that students could achieve at that higher level, and, or we believed that would be the case. And the enrollment trends are, are, are in line with what we see on our, on our test scores as kids come into the district.
I'm going to have a real quick.
Please go ahead.
I just want to point out that when we're looking at trend data, our, among our subgroups, please remember that our group, the little size matters. In smaller groups, the few students can cause bigger shifts. That's why differences across subgroups should be read with caution. Very small groups of our subgroups are not shown here for privacy and student identification purposes. And also, keeping, keeping in mind that when we're looking at overtime, we did have COVID-nineteen disruptions in the A M.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much for that. Let's go to the next slide, we can actually skip the next slide, the finding slide, although it summarizes more or less the kind of stuff that I've shared. And let's take a look at the next slide after theirs, which is, we're adding, it's the exact same data we just saw, but in the, we're adding our sophomore enrollment patterns since we detract. And I want to highlight a few things with this data. First of all, you see the range in sophomore enrollment and AP and honors prior to detracking on the left side of the screen. Somewhere in the area of forty-eight to fifty-five percent in the four years prior to the detracking. Since then, we've seen this percentage move from sixty-three percent to seventy-five percent. We did not directly manage this in any way, the way that we managed the work during the freshman year. What you are seeing here is that more and more freshmen are deciding, after this freshman experience, that they can enroll in honors classes each year, since we've done this. Again, sixty-three percent for the first cohort, the cohort we're talking about mostly tonight, who are now seniors in the school. And then seventy-four and seventy-five percent in subsequent years. So we're pleased to see that more students are showing that grit, right? That risk-taking to continue with honors experiences in subsequent years. Increasing on their own, that access initiative that we've been talking about at school for several years. This specific initiative, and many others. Let's go to slide seven now, and we see that same data again tease out demographic. Very similar in what we see in a few slides back. We see that we do see increases in enrollment in AP honors across our demographic spectrum, while, and, and, and the gaps that we had described previously are not erased. They, they are not going away. But more and more of our students across our demographic groups are enrolling in AP honors, and in this case, choosing to be there after that freshman experience. Not because of a specific distribution. Okay, let's go to slide eight if we can. This is the last of the, of the access slides here, of the last set of the access slide data. And this just transitions the same information to junior and senior year. And you can see, again, there's an increase in percentage enrollment in AP honors post the detracking, which you can see kind of marked in the yellow line there on the screen. Not the same dramatic extent that we see, but if you take a look at the year of graduation twenty-seven, this is this year's juniors. We see fifty-five percent of the juniors are enrolled in AP honors, the highest that we've seen, you know, in the past, in all the years we see, we see marked here. So we see this leaning in a good direction. And you're also going to see the first time on this slide, I think pretty clearly, something that we're going to reference later on in the report. And that is that, if you look at year of graduation twenty twenty-five, the Y O G in the bottom slides, year of graduation, you really see the year before this detracking cohort comes through, the really beginnings of that, of that increase. We've had some conversations with our division heads and our teachers, and we got students about this inside the building as well, that I, I will speak to as it goes later on. But there are, there's an increase, in short, there's increased conversations in the building about who can and should have access to these courses. And we're seeing some kind of leading indicators of that in Y O G twenty-five here. If you go to the next slide, you see again, that's, again, an increase post-detracking that is kind of leaning to a pass a little bit before detracking. Again, not, not as dramatic as we saw in sophomore year. This is just our juniors year. Not, not as dramatic as we saw sophomore year, but nonetheless, nonetheless present. And if you go to the next slide for our seniors, we see a little bit more of the same. I want to remind folks, as we're taking a look at the junior and senior year data too, is a few things are going on in this year that kind of affect these, these course day trends. Number one, we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow ourselves, ourselves to get seduced into the idea that the only valuable experience for a student in junior and senior year is an honors-level class or an EP-level course. We have a host of elective offerings, a host of experiences that's kids take in, in, you know, throughout their schooling here that are of really high quality. We also have a circus class that was specifically designed at the level it is, the college prep class, which has, in fact, on the enrollment that we see there to senior year. So, it's really important, as we, as we think about junior and senior curriculum experiences for kids, that we hold on to that, that diversity of experience where kids can choose a variety of different paths. It's really important as we as we think about junior and senior curriculum experiences for kids that we hold on to that uh that diversity of experience where kids can choose a variety of different paths. Um that are most appropriate for how they see themselves uh moving on post high school. Um so that is, that's the access indicators. That that is kind of the core stone of all of this, right? The assumption was that achievement would follow increased access. And so the next question we asked ourselves to follow that 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 really was thinking was uh so how are student achievement outcomes trending post detracking compared to previous years? If we go to the next two slides. We are going to go into this one.
One more?
Uh yeah, one more. Yeah, right there. That's perfect. Um so Kristen, did I say this was you?
Yeah.
Thank you. You're doing this one. Yeah, go ahead.
My guess. Uh as Dr. Johnson, I now will look at achievement outcomes to answer the question. How are students achieve, how are student achievement outcomes trending post detracking compared to prior years? Um to do that, we're gonna look at some great data. We're gonna look at SAT slash ACT data. Uh we'll explain that and also different parts of AP data. So this is, this should look familiar. This is grade distribution for semester one last school year. As you can see, the vast majority of students over ninety percent passed with a C or better. This data serves as demonstration of our ongoing monitoring practices and continuation of what we have previously shown the board in the other reports. Thank you. And this is the thing you have for semester two. Again, great distribution for those um three freshman courses um for semester two. And we see similar patterns there. This is the semester one data, but disaggregated by race. We looked at first semester letter grades by race and ethnicity. What you see here is that while most students across demographics earn passing grades. There are meaningful differences in how those grades are distributed. This slide doesn't show widespread failure. Most students are passing. But it does highlight some equity concerns and we'll explore that a little bit more. Um again, this is showing semester two, the same course we're sitting here um for English, History and Science freshman honors courses. And again, we're showing similar patterns. So this is a lot of information on one slide, so bear with me. Um this is semester one um pass rate for freshman English, History and Science. Um detract courses over time. Um so and then the table that you see is the count of failing grades and the non-passing grade counts um to show. Um so there is not a different, different set of data that you're seeing in the line graph. As you saw in previous slides, our curriculum redesign has kept failure rates low, only about one or two S for every hundred course enrollments. And at the same same time, the redesigned courses now enroll much broader mix of students. Yet the failures that do occur are not equitably distributed. Black students and to a lesser extent, Hispanic students are more likely to not pass than white, Asian and multiracial peers. This is not a widespread failure problem. It is an equity problem within a generally successful system. So this is the same year you're seeing semester two. Um given some of our relatively small subgroup sizes, we focus on multi-year trends rather than a single year fluctuation. And we pair percentage rates which within the actual student counts to provide context for the scale of need. For instance, small sample sizes mean year-to-year changes may reflect individual student circumstances rather than systemic patterns. These are things that we keep in mind in understanding our approach to support. Our approach must be individualized to the root cause of the F's while also monitoring the system. So that's a bold advantage in thinking about these two data sets. Um so this is a recap of what I just said.
Okay, the next slide here takes a look at the SAT EBRW um percents of meets and exceeds over the past six school years. Well, seven school years really uh past, you know, from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty four. Um also last year, it it shows those scores as well. So how are we able to do this? Because our students took the ACT. They have different standards. They have different marks for meets and exceeds. Uh the college board uh produces a concordance table that allows you, it's based off of national data sets, and it allows you to translate. Uh ACT scores to SAT scores, so you can make exactly these types of comparisons. It's not useful some for some sort of diagnostic analysis to really drill down and understand how individual students are doing or to really understand how uh. To I don't modify one's approach to helping kids prepare for a test. It is designed to help you understand kind of overall trends. And the overall takeaway from this in aggregate form for us is that this first cohort of students uh who have gone through this revised curriculum experience. Are meeting and exceeding in about the same clip as the students who preceded. I want to be clear about something here too. Um throughout this, especially when it gets to achievement, we are talking about comparing cohorts to one another. As we started last school year, we have a growth uh we 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 have growth goals that we use for the SAT and we have. Um a report that we use uh to kind of talk about student growth uh over time specifically on these standard size achievements, something that is really hard to do through concordant states. Right? So this is uh an appearance of uh you know, uh of of two cohorts against other four or. Four hurts, right? This is how the state can access as well. Uh on the next slide, you see this exact same information, line graph, overtime, teased up by demographic groups, similar to the pattern that we established previously in this report. And you really see much of what I described uh earlier, right? We see it it essentially is is very similar data what we saw in previous years. Uh we have uh hope that the uh the the last two years for our black students on the SAT and the ACT two represent the beginning of an ongoing trend. Um that is that is narrowly that that gap that exists between other students. I think it's really worth drawing attention to that, but um that is something that has to be monitored over time to see how that progresses. Uh to see what this change looks like in subsequent years. Again, this is one group of students. Let's go to the next slide and I'll explain what this is um before I turn it back to uh. So here. Um this is looking at the percentage of Old Park and River Forest High School students. Each year from the graduating class of two thousand and nineteen through our current graduating class of twenty twenty six, the percentage of old guard students who performed within the top twenty percent nationally. On the SAT. The idea is how are students who are really achieving at a really high level, how are they uh trending over time at Old Park R F? And you do see a little bit of noise in this data, for sure. Um especially as you look at the year, you'll note that the graduating class of twenty twenty one is missing from this data, right? COVID, of course, is related to that. Um but uh again, similar to something that is a theme that I have seen over the past, that I said over the past few slides, beginning the year just before and continuing to this school year, we have the highest two. Percentage marks that we've seen since the graduating class of twenty nineteen in that top uh in that top point. Um so uh again, more time is needed to draw conclusions and to really call this a definitive trend, but um we are um. I you know, excited to see this at this point in the process. Um with that said, let's uh transition here to the AP test data. Actually, I was a little bit early in my taxing back to. Um I think the next two slide are ones that I'm gonna address here. Um this is AP test taking trends. And I want to remind everybody of um why this is important data for us to be looking at here. The whole premise of 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 going through this experience of detracking our students is they give students access to AP honors classes early in the game, when they come to us from different schools and experiences, disparate distance. To come to us, give them access to a rigorous curriculum in the hopes that we will see them. Enroll in A and be successful in AP honors and AP classes in subsequent years. We talked about enrollment before, seeing that really nice trend with sophomores. Hoping that that continues with our juniors and seniors. Um what we see here is really, the story is really in the orange line here. That we see uh a greater number of us juniors uh in take at least one AP exam over the past few years than what we've seen previously. This is choice. It's the students opting for this academic experience. And again, that trend we talked about before, the year before, the tracking, you see that when you're actually detracting, it's uh it's face, it's face close to that that mark. Um okay, so that's that. And then if you go to the next slide, we tease this apart, uh apart, excuse me, by actual score. And so um you see what the trend looks like for students who achieved three above students who achieved have uh. Scored four and above on those AP tests and students students who have uh formed it out of five or above on those AP tests. Okay, we get that that raw data. Um the actual merits is in the later slide. We wanted to take a look exactly what this meant um for uh demographic groups. And so Kristen's gonna explain the approach we took to uh to illustrating this. So Kristen, watch what you.
Okay, so um as Dr. Johnson said, one of the questions I had was, as I mentioned, the difference of size, sample sizes really plays into understanding the impact on our data. So one of the things I wanted to know, um my background was school psychologist. School psychologists love rate of improvement. They love understanding. At what rate, at what clip we are improving and how does that impact? And so one of the things I want to understand is, alright, so how is this change happening and what does that mean, given the different sample sizes? So what you're seeing here is really just an absolute change in test taking by race using the last year minus the first year. And as you can see. Given that formula, all students, um all subgroups have increased in participation, but what does that mean, given the size of our our subgroups? So that would be the next slide. And this um slide is using a compound annual growth rate, which shows the average yearly growth in participation from first year to the last year, as if it grew steadily each year. It lets us compare growth across student groups with differing different starting sizes and avoid noises from one-off spikes and dips. So the the compound annual growth rate or P A R doesn't show year-to-year variability. It's a summary of start to finish growth. So to summarize, the difference in P A R among racial groups reflects not just the participation numbers, but also the broader context of educational equity and access. Groups with lower initial participation can show higher growth rates as they catch up. And that's what we see here. We see students with lower, with lower share with the market, if you will. Catching up. Um but while those with the higher initial shares may be more modest growth due to their obvious significant presence in AP programs.
Okay, with that said, the next steps here obviously can be monitoring uh across the board. And um I think what we're gonna do is pause here and open to several questions and uh any one of us to. Sort of responding to questions that say, assuming of course you have.
One thing I would have liked to see in this data is how Old Park's. Data and trend over time compared to that of. Results for your district as well, to see our achievement. There's, for us, nation, there's no well trend in higher P A R, higher AP test participation across the country as well as. Higher rate of three, four and five scores across the country. So I'm like, you know, trying to talk about whatever we doing to narrow the achievement gap. I'd like to understand how much of our actions are actually influencing that versus a trend that we've seen across schools of nearby as well as nationwide.
Hey, I appreciate that. I I'm gonna share that um. You know, we have access to our AP data right now. Uh we don't have access uh to AP data for this last school year for everybody else. Uh but just that's only until the uh. Uh the school of marketing comes up right at the bottom of the stuffs.
Are you talking um what, just some of the data, where you're thinking, those test scores or the participation?
I mean, all the test scores participation and when we talk about serious tests, right?
Okay, A C T, S A P.
Yeah, trying to basically, right? And yet when we're talking about. All these things. Which is definitely that that we see large impact on the other switch. So seeing how how perhaps our, if you talk about dips and spikes year over year, right? Uh and we don't have a huge set of data anytime, but seeing how we compare to if there are similar dips or spikes. In what we consider our district as well as, you know, state like. What else nicely, are we doing something that is.
Yes, um so um. Several speakers earlier today brought up the um the lack of qualitative data shared in the report. Um I know that the um. And this report is in some ways um. You know, it it's very much a um overarcherial view of where we are, where we're how, where we're from. Um I think um. You know, I I do think we should, a a couple of things. I think we should um. You know, we uh last year, I don't know, we looked at ISAR, taking on the evaluation and we. I believe we established or committed to a two-year, every two-year um doing that that study, that expanded study, the. Analysis, the the pressure being great, you know, is that I corrected them. Currently that's the cadence every other year.
Every other year was discussed last year, yes.
Yeah, right. Um I I think I I think we should um, you know, revisit that and look at uh the merits of, you know, committing to it annually. Um how we can more meaningfully uh. Uh in uh both now and then in real time integrate um more qualitative. Measures of of learning to inform um uh our outcomes and our discussion, who wants to get here. Um I think uh, you know, I I I am concerned about the. I I I know it's it's a modest dip, but even though it is a dip in the 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 um both semester one and semester two. Pass rates among black students and um it would be nice to uh. Already have those arrows in our clipper where we're in a qualitative way reaching out to our. Our black students and asking the right questions and making the right um real-time adjustments when needed. Um so I I do think we need to um. More meaningfully to think out how we are. How we are um committed to. Uh the qualitative data collection process in a in an ongoing way. And how that can be more nimble and uh and substantive and really serve us, serve our needs better. Um because because right now we can, I look at the. Um you know, the that that one slide and I I have a lot of questions and the the questions that could be answered, I think, if we did have. Um a uh a more robust, detailed, thought-out commitment to qualitative analysis. So I just, I would like to hear what your 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 perspective on that is. I um I understand that. This is very much in, you know, an aerial view, which is more numbers-based, what's presented tonight, so I'm not. Um but I do feel like there's a lot of work to be done in the qualitative uh uh arena. I'd like to hear how. What your thoughts are on that and how we can um be more nimble and more uh uh. Uh better, better uh in a far more real-time manner.
So I think just in uh reading through and looking at all the previous reports from the freshman curriculum work. There definitely has been qualitative data. I know that that uh originally focused around some of the five essentials questions and data. And um I think there's definitely opportunity to go back and collect some feedback uh from our teachers for sure. And definitely from our students. So you know, that is something that we can definitely incorporate into our work and into our analysis. I think um it's probably five years uh or maybe even six years back since the curriculum. Work started to actually write the curriculum and develop the curriculum. I know that in talking to our division heads. I know that in talking to our division heads, there has been work done to revise that curriculum. Um, you know, a- as as we've gone along the way, uh, but they also recognize the need to really go back and. Do some more large-scale conversations with teachers and looking at what we call street data. So that's really from the arithmeticon assessment data. And really uh, disaggregating that data and looking at that more deeply as well. So I think there's there's definitely opportunities for us to do that. And uh, many things that we could really do with our collaborative teams in-house.
I also want to mention that I understand that this is a four-level report. It's at a certain level. Internally, there are practices where we are seeking feedback on a very regular basis. I support the division heads doing focus groups. Whenever there's any sort of curriculum question, um, I did a few last year and it it was. Very informative and I work with the teacher groups um, to take the focus group feedback. And one of the things I started doing was working with the teachers really closely and developing the right questions. Um, say, what what is it we really want to know? And that was really eye-opening for them because I said, like, you know. Sometimes we get stuck asking the same questions. I said, no, what do we really want to know? You know, and then we meet with students and um. Buy the visa, give them the, you know, things. Um. And so there are a lot of internal practices where we are doing that to collect qualitative data. Um, we do have a lot of um, survey data that we use, um, to be perfectly honest with you. I think people are. Well, send surveys right now, so that's been a challenge is actually getting um, survey completion rates. So we are incorporating a lot of. Qualitative data alongside as as a part of our internal practices. Um, and just wouldn't classify that as the outcome of so of what we're talking about tonight. Um, but just if that helps you or if that's practice, I understand that. Um, and I I do um.
You know, uh, I guess for another conversation, I would love to hear um. Where that's going, uh, where the qualitative analysis of this is going or heading. I I. I I'm not a fan of focus groups. I think there's lots of threats to validity and reliability of focus groups. I think you know. Um, um, the group speed phenomenon is a powerful one. A lot of people don't even like speed. Groups, it's a, it's a wholesome sample of times for me. Um, and I think there are other instruments that we should take a look at, like listening tours. Um, I, you know, I've been a broker on that, but I. Also, um, I think we need to really think about how the environment, um. You know, where we are engaging with students and parents, families more meaningfully. Um, a lot of this, I think, um. I always come back to the. Um, uh, when Graham, when you called me on the phone, we had waiting for the, having our first community engagement meeting. And uh, Graham had come to the library, uh, um. Thinking he was at the library, uh, at school. And uh, and I think he was right to think, oh, that's a great idea. I think it should be at the library. I think we should really think more meaningfully and deliberately about where. Where are the the more neutral gathering spaces that are less threatening perhaps to um. To not only our um, the actors that we're trying to get information from, but that are, you know, less threatening to our data collection efforts. Um, I just, I feel like we really should um, think that through more meaningfully, put that into action as well. So I would like to hear more about that. Um, and for that to, you know, just percolate a little bit. I'd like to continue that conversation. I think there's a lot more you there. Uh, effort, efforts we can make to make our, the data we collect more meaningful and substantive.
Another, yeah, I would like to make recognition is, I'd like to see low income versus not low income. Division as well as um. I E P, non-I E P vision. Uh, I think, right, but. One of the things that came out, if I recall correctly, that was Parks, Rachel Analysis. Director. The take. Uh, to that effect, identifying how. Lower. Students are.
Okay, I'm gonna be real simple about my question. Go back to slide, oh, sorry, go back to slide seventeen. And that has to do with. Distribution of. Favorite grades. And you made a comment that it was an equitiation. So my question is. What are we doing? To resolve that equitiation?
You guys talked, you you already talked a little bit about our interventions and how we rely on cloud information. So that, could you talk about for students who are struggling in classes? Kind of what are our, what is our intervention structure?
Okay, okay. And wasn't sure if that's, is that more what you're trying to, how do we assign?
Yeah. I'll go back to. I'll go back to. Two thousand eighteen. Or be five, better sixty, whenever we started this. This this was started because there's disparity. This is disparity between the achievement of all white students and X. And um. I've been a a big supporter of of. Of this detrac, right? The second, the night that John Duffy introduced me to it, um, I jumped on board and I jumped on board both, both force. Um. And so I understand this is something that's not gonna happen overnight, but. Uh. I'm still concerned because I don't see. In 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 terms of the. The differentiation. Now, everybody seems to be going up, okay? Uh. But our 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 black and minority students have a much. Uh, uh, a much greater uh, ability to continue on. Alright, where the the kids that are already achieving at a high, they can work so much. And so that's, this is my biggest concern. Alright, is that we don't seem to be, the. The lines are moving up together. We don't seem to be closing again.
Right.
And that's, that's, uh, you know, and that's where I see that where the issue.
Right. First of all, I think it's a really important question to ask. And uh, probably uh, really something for us to go back and talk even further with division heads and the teachers. So. Uh, just in my initial time here, I've been in the classrooms observing, uh, both our um. Our our honors curriculum and then other pieces of the freshman curriculum as well. I've been in uh, some of our uh, supported classes uh, as well. And uh, and have had conversations with our division heads for English, uh, history and science. So um, just in learning from them, a couple of things that I think are really good moves and probably why everybody has gone up, but also. Really critical for means for equity. Uh, the first one is all three of those, all three of those curricular areas are uh, developed and written toward the standards. So we've got uh, the rigor of our grade level standards. One of the questions I asked them on, how do we know it's not honors? I mean, how do we know it's honors and not just a a college curriculum? And each of them uh, engage teachers in the writing. In a thoughtful process to think about what makes each of those courses honors. And that's different for each of three of those because they are discipline-specific uh, reactions. So what is writing a curriculum to standards and then writing the common assessments to standards do? That provides us with a level of consistency. So that if students move from class to class, um, uh, that they still have the same curriculum if if they are moving, if schedules change. It provides us with a level of consistency where students have individualized edu- education programs. Uh, that are special education teachers in either co-teaching or providing additional supports. Uh, can provide that support to the same curriculum targets. So our goal is performance in in grade level curriculum and meaningful benefit from grade level curriculum. It also means as we start to work uh, with our multilingual learners. That we also have those same consistent curricular targets, so we can develop language acquisition targets. And those language acquisition targets or any pre-teaching helps uh, with supporting students in that curriculum. The other thing is with the common targets and the common assessment, it really helps our collaborative teams of teachers. So the magic always happens in the classroom and the interaction between the students and the teacher. But the second level of magic that is really necessary and something we always want to be committed to providing our teachers is quality collaborative time. And so um, the discussions in that collaborative time allow for them uh, to plan, uh, but more importantly, look at their data. And uh, that's something uh, we can always grow and improve in as as we move forward. Um, in addition to that, uh, if you think about um, our science curriculum in general. Uh, one of the things that I noticed right away, and I talked to our teachers about, but I've been in the rooms. And then our uh, science division head is that our methodology, one of the strongest things that we have is modeling. And we have what we would call uh, low floor, high ceiling. And so that means that in our curriculum and that honors, everybody can enter, everybody can access a task, an experiment, um, a lab design. Everybody can access the key vocabulary, everybody can access the reading, but then there's points where everybody can go up. Uh, so no matter where you're performing, you can go up higher and perform at higher levels. So there's always more that you can do and expand. Um. In our, both our um. Our uh, English classes and our social science classes, there's been a concerted effort. Um, to really think about the content in actually all three, there's been reduction of content. So we can elevate competencies and skills. So if we just pile on content, then kids get further and further behind. But if we emphasize skill over content, then we have higher levels of development. We've done a lot there. There's more that we can do within that realm as well. Uh, but in those uh, in those uh, history and English classes. Um, there's been a concerted effort to really focus on the texts that students are reading. Um, making those uh, uh, culturally responsive, culturally sustaining. There's been an ass effort for cultural positivity. Um, and then there's also been an effort to think about uh, specifically in English classes, what we call text sets. So um, the texts are built so that uh, there are different lengths of text, there are different levels of text complexity in those texts. But that students uh, have that range to move towards grade level, um, uh, to to actually achieve the grade level goals in grade level texts. So there's a lot of things uh, for access and meaningful benefit of those skills. And then what we might be lagging a little bit is we've got to get all of that access and those skills done in the grade level content, in the grade level text. So I see a lot of things um, that that have been done. I know the collaborative teams have worked very hard. There's been a tremendous amount of planning. There was also uh, for all of those teachers who wrote that original curriculum and even more. Uh, training on differentiation instruction for in that honors class that they would be prepared. Uh, so we can always uh, uh, we can always be better and and do better. And uh, it really sounds like it's a time to really get the teachers back around um, the data. Um, and thinking about some of the points that you brought up, that our community members have brought up today. And uh, how we can uh, really gain an even deeper and larger perspective uh, to move that trajectory even further.
Are we, it's sort of a, just a candidate. If a teacher names out a name to us, feels. Let's say, you know, please, to listen to that. Or we ask the teacher, why do you think those two black students?
I don't know that specifically. I know we should always be tracking our D N F data and doing it by demographics. Um, that is something that.
So I can, yeah, I don't know the practices around it because that's not my role, so I don't want to speak outside my role, but. One of the, there's a couple of things um, to address what you're, both you're saying. And one of the things is. We are doing so much better using data and building dashboards that do this for us in real time. So previously. With our current um, student information system, that was not possible to like really disaggregate in a meaningful way. That wasn't like one-offs. Um, we have built the dashboard where teachers now are able to review um, their grade distribution um. Overall, five grades by all the populations you're talking about. Um, and so that way, the division heads obviously have that in the aggregate. And then teachers have that for just their own students. So those those conversations because of our advancements and our, the way we're looking at data. Has been able to start occurring and it's just more efficient, like I would say. Um, and then a couple of things to add on. So you're talking about this dashboard or this this um, slide here with accounts and things like that. So what Dr. Hester is talking about is really thinking about the core and the content where. Where you said the magic happened were most instruction, but where you can impact the most students. We know that we have students that regardless of what happens in the classroom, need something extra. So something we have done in the past couple of years with um, our new sort of M T S S team. Is we redesigned the way we were, how fast we respond to S. Uh, right now, we review data on a very regular basis. We've put. We've redesigned it in a way that it can be so much more responsive, it's more automated. So we're not waiting for a meeting to make a referral. Uh, we've automated our process so that minutes of a referral is made. It shoots off to the, you know, person we review. And so this, we've really done it because one of the things that. Our M T S S coordinator is passionate about is we need to get interventions against when they need them. Uh, so we have done a lot of redesign of that process to be more responsive. We redesigned our P S S meeting agendas so that they are way more focused on the data and the students who actually need. So we really. Every student who gets any app is looked at. One app gets you on our agenda. And that, and then we have different iterations of looking at attendance, infractions, um, Ds, and Ss. And that where we are looking at students who we're trying to look at students now with multiple Cs, because those are kids who are entering that slippery slope, right? But we have really redesigned our P S S practices, which aren't the core content or tier one. Those are the people saying, hey, I see a kid with two Fs. Two different teachers might not know that, right? And so now our P S S teams are really taking action to identify what. The root cause and that's what I try to record analysis. We're really trying to get, do a better job of recording analysis to get the appropriate intervention to a student.
So I think that's, yes, first of all, thank you. I think that's wonderful and that's stated, that's stated in the heart of it, too. Bring a lot of quantitative data, right? And and kind of to that point, right? And to the root cause. We have teachers that have been here forever and have seen like classes and classes and classes of kids, have seen generations of kids have created. And if you ask them, I promise you, the teachers can see in a second. That's why they can. Our our, right, so so, you you know, and I think collecting that information, that that candid, that that candid response as far as. You know, it's one thing to to intervene in, I, in what we're intervening about.
Absolutely. No, and that's actually part of the process. That's the root cause analysis that we're doing. And then we are using a um, panoramic universal screener. Now that we are matching that qualitative type of data with our um, quantitative data to then, really all of this is. All the quantitative does is raise your flag. It does not tell us why. And so our P S S team, our M T S S coordinator, and and we have clues efficiently effectively, like we wish we could sit down with every single kid and, you know. But really, that's not always sufficient. Now, we get to kids who are supposed to be early struggling, we absolutely do that for them. So um, we have a sort of a tiered process within our process. Of of how to decide and how to look at data, when to talk to a student, when to get more information, when to do observation in class, when to do a clinical interview. We have. Those practices as well that are informed by different um, evidence-based flags.
So what kind of root causes, sorry, what kind of root causes have we had? As 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 sources?
Um, well, you can look at academic, you can look at attendance, community impact, you can look at trauma, you can look at S L, social skills. All of these things. And usually it's not just one thing alone. Life is never that easy. Um, we, like, those are all things that we we consider. Um, and and work towards. So like, you want to rule out, take the rule out, rule-in, rule-out process, right? Um, I was just on an email today where we were trying to understand the math difficulty and a bunch of people said, you know, the teacher weighed in and said, hey, no, this kid comes. He does everything he's supposed to do. He's still struggling. He's well, like, good, and then they're mentioned. Let's monitor him, let's watch him, right? And so it was a highly collaborative process and it wasn't rule-in, rule-out. It's easier every day. That's a big one, right? And so these are the conversations that we are having. Um, with any kid who is getting up, I I promise you, every kid who doesn't have is on the list. I I promise you, every kid who doesn't have is on the list and it's also these.
First of all, I'm not trying to make you the fall. I I appreciate what you guys have done and and I see massive improvement over the years from where we were. Even a couple of years ago, um to be able to identify and 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 act. But I have another question, uh and this is coming from a tonic underachiever. Okay, how? It's kind of easy to find those kids that are struggling in the bottom level. What about the kids that are somewhere in the middle, alright, and are struggling? The kids that are getting Bs who shouldn't be getting As, the kids who are getting Cs that shouldn't be getting Bs. Um, you know, how how do you identify them, you know, and and how do you provide them uh supports that they could, that they could be used?
I think that's a, that's a, a general classroom practice that happens all the time with teachers. So our our teachers are working with our students every day. They have that understanding of. Um, you know, who has more potential that they could push further. Um, they understand who is, you know, this close uh to making the next move and and having success. And um that's where their feedback in the classroom uh really makes a difference and uh their communication with parents. And then their conversations with the students. Do we have any questions?
So, yeah, I can be, I can, I can be ready. Uh. So thank you for the discussion so far. I think this has been really helpful. Um, to sort of clarify some of the practices, especially around the the failure data. That's really important. But I want to just change gears for a second to talk about slide number twenty-two. Um. And so could someone just talk again through slide number twenty-two and what the key takeaways are from this one?
Sure. I did last time, Chris. Do you want to give a shout out or do you want to go again?
You did a great job.
So this is, so this is um. Take a look at old PRF students within the context of national data trends and specifically what it's looking at is um. The percentage of our kids who fall within the top twenty percent nationally. So if our population was identical to the nation, to the nations, you would see a straight line across right at the twenty percent. So what you see here is that old PRF students historically have have placed above at least double that percentage. Right? In the top twenty percent, you see about forty, you know, one percent or so. Uh, and then graduate last uh twenty nineteen, it goes to exactly forty percent in the year graduation twenty-three. Uh, and then you, you know, it's a change of that to that. So, but yeah, this is taking a look at. Send the R K's that fall from the top quintile nationally.
So then I just wanted to invite you to make one leap between what the improvements that you're seeing in twenty-five, twenty-six. In the, I know it's early days and really one data point, but just give us the takeaway in terms of. What that tells me, what we have made, what you're finding that is about some of the changes that have been made in the pressure.
Well, one of the concerns to be directed on that we heard right off the bat. Was that, okay, fine, you're gonna detract freshman year and that's going to have the effect of drawing down, lowering the achievement of your top end kids. The last two graduating class, only this last one went through detracting though. Uh, we do not see evidence of that using this data in a very limited sample size.
Got it.
Hey, yeah.
Great.
Slide three.
Yes.
So this slide shows that all of the honors courses uh were hovering around eighty-five percent of the freshmen now. Um, is that the target or expectation? Eighty-five percent? Do you think that could be improved on at all?
Could you explain what is the reason for this percentage?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Um, so. Well, when it started, like as it started, as um the process was being approved, one of the things we recognize is we have a set of students. Who require special ed level courses um in in different, different levels of special ed and have just, you know, one, it's it's different intensities of special ed. We also have some students who come to us with such a skill deficit that they are unable to access general curriculum. So they are getting, they are getting the curriculum, but in a much more supported and it's matched to an intervention to improve literacy skills. So you're, you're seeing that those students wouldn't be represented in this, in this school.
When you say that, you mean those students are the fifteen percent that are not here? Okay.
Can, can I add something too, please, to that? Um, it, that is based off of what data? Could you explain that, please?
Um, that's incoming freshman math, I'm sorry, yeah, eighth grade and seventh grade math data. We get about three to four data points from all of our, um, I'm sorry, the Probio schools provide this I-ready data. Um, and the, the public schools provide this math data with about three to four data points from those schools along with um. Grades and um programs of courses.
Okay, so when we think about these two main objectives, one is to achieve or max out the participation. The other is to hopefully see good grades for kids in these grade classes. Would it be fair to say that probably eighty-five percent is about what we're gonna see in terms of maxing out participation?
From a theoretical response to intervention model, that is correct.
Okay. Can we go to slide seventeen again, please? Just want to confirm that the table is on the lower right. That is the, the, that's just kids who are just about outright failed class.
No, those aren't kids, those are courses. So all this data is class level data.
So we're counting grades, not kids?
Yeah, okay, alright.
Well, that's.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, okay, um. You know, and, and if you, so this chart is important because obviously we're saying, okay, every possible kid would be in an honors class is is there now. Uh, this shows you the disparity um for black children in terms of the actual grades that they're getting. What's interesting is that the grades across the other groups have remained, you know, fairly steady even through the implementation of this program. So that obviously points out the issue. Um. So there's been some questions and you responded about, alright, what's the plan? We've maxed out participation. Now what's the plan to help all kids succeed? What are the strategies or the tactics? And I've heard you discuss classroom tactics, uh things like co-teaching and how that works. I've also heard you talk about interventions, family and student level interventions. Our friends in the community are talking about a potential independent committee. So among these different ideas, what's, what's next? Uh, what are the right strategies and tactics? And what resources do these things are needed that you aren't getting from us today?
Any other question? No, no, you go ahead, you go ahead. No, no, I haven't, I've, okay. I just liked the question.
Well. I'm still listening and learning. Uh, and with that, uh, some of the things uh is. Really looking, uh, so when you say strategies, so what strategies, what resources? Uh, first of all is uh what resources do we need with within the classroom? And so we have a a strong intervention uh system that supports in addition to the classroom. But one of my questions is what resources do we actually need in those, in those honors classes? So that that's, that's one question. Um, I, another one is I. Uh, what is our data telling us about what we need to revise in the curriculum? And what is our uh data telling us or our student response telling us that we might need more professional learning? Um, or in-depth work. So our teachers have learned a lot. And uh they probably have a pretty good idea of what they need next. Um, but thinking about that, that professional learning. Um, I also really believe in the power of our uh teacher collaborative, collaborative teams. And that is really understanding is what capacity do they have uh with data and time to go by student bystander? Um, by achievement outcome. And that really gets down to if we're looking at our students with uh Bs and Fs. How do we go down to that granular level? And then Kristen already mentioned, and you start to peel off, you know, what is, uh, what is the the root cause? And then what supports uh do they need? Um, I, getting the right data in the hands of teachers is is something that that. That I'm curious about too, is what data is readily available that actually helps them make a difference.
So what I, if I were to paraphrase, what I hear you saying is you're still going to figure it out. But right now, you're not at a point where you're coming to us as a board and saying, we need resource X, Y, Z. Because we think this is gonna have the greatest effect.
Not right now. And I would say that I think there will be resources.
Resources needed, you mean?
I, I think so within the, within the honors uh curriculum itself. You know, I think with the fifteen percent and I like, you know, and just getting to know us, just getting to understand us. Uh, we seem to be uh well-resourced. Um, I need to talk to teachers more to really dig into that. But I think within, we put a lot of kids, we put eighty-five percent of of the kids. In that, that curriculum is what resource do we need in that honors classroom? Uh, to provide this uh the support and really the acceleration.
Right, because the next thing to attack is where do we need more?
Yes, yes.
Um, I also would say that, and and one of, one of the things I've been trying to do the past couple of years, and I think you've received reports from me. Um, that shows program evaluation of our current interventions. And so we've been working really hard in understanding what makes somebody successful and there has been qualitative data in there. Um, and so. One of these are working really hard with people delivering interventions, are we being successful? We're putting a kid in an intervention, that's meaningful, they better get something out of it. And so we also um saw a hole recently in our interventions um that we need something more flexible. So our MTSS coordinator in um implemented checking act, which is a very evidence-based intervention that is relationship-built. It's not um academic, but it's working with students, but it's also uncovering what's going on and it's creating that relationship. So we do see, we, so doing those program evaluations, one of the things we're doing is saying, is this program working? And we need to, do we need to continue? But the other thing is, are we seeing some more holes? And are we inadequate in our ability to respond? And so that's why we do those program evaluations. Um, and and we do have ideas. But I don't want to come to the board before I really, really understand. And so I would say that, that that's why we're, we're continuously doing program evaluations.
So this is getting me to exactly where I wanted to get into. Um, so the, that's a first of all, I, I actually, I'm always, I feel like I'm almost the last board member to think. Uh, the work that you're doing and I want to make sure that you, you know, I'm thankful for the work you're doing. I know, uh, and I think I was going straight to the, you know, uh, s- uh suggestions and crit- criticism. Um, um, I, um, I know this is, this is a lot. Um, I think there there are several things to build on here with, um, you know, this conversation. This is our, we all know this is our, our uh number one strategic plan priority as such. Um, yeah, I think um it it demands uh urgency. It demands um a different, um, it may be a different type of uh grading and stewardship. Um, I think we need to really take a step back and look at what is our current culture? Or how we are committing to data and analysis? Um, what are the, um, how, how comfortable do you feel coming to us and saying? We're not doing enough qualitative because of capacity issues, because it costs too much. And I can tell you right now, as a board member, I'm ready to green light more spending on that stuff in a heartbeat. Um, so I, 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 you know, so I, I want us to have a culture that is, that that trusts in this, that we can be more nimble. And make adjustments in real time in our evaluation efforts. Uh, there's trust when you come to us that we're gonna be listening and because this is our number one strategic priority, we're all in. And I, I really want to make sure that we, we fully understand that we have a system. We're accountable to a system and a culture that we're all on the same page where. You know, if there's an opportunity to look at something or be including a depth. And you need more resources, you need more, more uh uh personal power, then let's make it happen, let's do it. Um, uh, and I, I, so I, I think just really, I, I, I really wanna. Hit our will against that problem right now and figure out better ways that we can be accountable to a more real-time. The value of the process, have the, the, the trust, the, the, the horizontal axes going on where you can come to us and say. We're not doing this right now because we don't have the capacity to do it. Can you green light some external help to come in and make this happen, you know, stuff like that? Um, I think it's just really important. Um. And I, and I also think that, um, you know, I, I think that in a way, since some of what we're getting at right now. We can look to what our community members brought to the table tonight and uh as a way to help get into. Um, you know, greater systems of accountability, greater input from stakeholders, um, and how this can actually help in that process as well, so.
Yes. Yeah, I don't have a question, but I do have a couple of observations. Um, first, I just saw that a lot of neighbors called the issue. Um, I, I for one, we'll have that encouraging administration to um to present onto that. Um, and and that's for a reason, it's not a rejection of community input. It's not a rejection of of what the people that are willing to say. Um, it's really more a response to, there are still people in our community who don't think that we shouldn't be doing this at all. Who reject this initiative and um and objective data, qualitative data is, I think, our best. Way to respond to those voices in our community. So I, I credit the administration with putting together this presentation the way they did. Um, just for that reason. Um. You know, it can't be, can't be emphasized enough, we are taking early days with this initiative. Our, our senior class is the first cohort. Um, we still don't have four years of data, we're not gonna know their E P results. Um, et cetera, for, for a year. Um, and so this data that we do have, this, this is the, you know, this is green shoots, this is, this is early days. Um. The trend lines are encouraging. Two things can be true, right? One, the trend lines are encouraging. If you look slide by slide through this, that there are encouraging things. We have greater access across all demographics. We have better academic outcomes, we have more students who are choosing honors after freshman year. We have um more students who are choosing AP classes, we have more students who are taking the test. We have improved performance on AP tests. These are, these are all encouraging trend lines that just, they're, it's, that's, it's inarguable. Um, and that, that progress is the work of a lot of adults in this building. I, I give uh the administration a lot of credit, but I, even more so, I give the, with the president and the faculty. Hundreds of adults in this building who have worked for years on this initiative. Who have developed curriculum, who have re- rethought how they're gonna teach their classes, who have. Um, uh, it's been countless hours of work by hundreds of people. And these green shoots that we are seeing, these early indicators of success are a credit to all of that work by all of these adults. So gratitude to all. Um. The other thing that is true, even though we are seeing progress, is that it's not enough.
Thank you.
Right? Nobody disagrees with that. It is not enough. We know that. We know that we still have to get the work to do. Um. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Bailey asked a question earlier tonight, do we really want the change? And actually, I just wanted to speak to that. Um. Please do not doubt the commitment of the board of the administration to, to continue. Uh, to address the achievement gap, to continue to address the needs of all of our students. To continue to enhance access and and student achievement for all of our students. We're a hundred percent committed to that, all of us are. So do we want the change? Absolutely, we want the change. Um, I also recognize that. Um I also recognize that actions speak louder than words, right? Um and so later tonight, um I think that we're gonna be talking about our board goals. And you know, one of our, one of the goals that we have we have articulated for ourselves for this year is. Um a a an increased attention to this initiative. Um and and I think that um, you know, I think it's it deserves that, I think it's the right time for that. And we've heard a number of um of suggestions tonight, including. Um from people in the room for an external committee, it's an interesting idea, I certainly think it's worth the conversation. Um we've heard specific things articulated uh by the administration that are are that need to explore and perhaps resource. Um we we've, there are there are lots of things that we know that we could be doing. Um I I I have been frustrated over the last couple of years because I feel like we've heard it last year and here before that. Um as we've asked the question that that board member Brisbane asked. Are there things that you need? Um you know, the answer has been, well, I'm sure there will be, uh I'm sure we'll think of those things, but but. It the 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 request doesn't come back. And so um I think part of the board's focus um over the next few months. Needs to be in really pushing the administration to finally identify those things. Um whatever enhancements we need to make, they need to make, whatever additional supports we need to provide. Um uh whatever change we need to make for students who are getting apps, um we need to do those during this. So I it's early days for this initiative, but our students don't have that luxury, right? For our students, this is their only day, this is the only time that they have. And so we can't wait another year or another year or another year to to make changes, to make improvements to this initiative. We need to do it this year.
So um so I will add, first of all, thank you to just all of my fellow board members, just for their thoughtful comments and questions. And pushes important, I hope you're hearing a huge level of support for. Doing this and continue to push this, making sure that we're able to help all our students in ways that they need. Um and I do appreciate everything that you all done and what your teams have been done. And I am telling you, even just the data and what we can get, and I think Christian, you talked about the real-time dashboards and tracking students and what's needed. I think that's really a huge advantage um for our school. The one thing, the data that I do wanna push, this is not necessarily our honors curriculum, but we think about. Eighty, eighty-five percent of our students coming in to um the honors curriculum, that's not the case for our black students. So you've got our black kids who are coming in at about sixty percent, so our kids are not starting, we got the same starting. And that for me, you know, kind of brings back to other issues we've been needing to get to us. And again, my question for you, when you speak about our students who need more intensive intervention and need work. If I look at this data, it seems that most of those students are black. And so part of what if we also need to do is, how do we close that gap so that we do have eighty-five percent? Of our black students, because this gap you're seeing between our black and other students, I don't see that closing. If we're not able to address where our students are coming in and where they're starting from. And that again goes beyond OPRF, when you bring in this freshman, the scores are getting in in seventh to eighth grade. Our scores that you're not influencing, but it's what's being delivered to our school. And so I know that there are things that we can do at OPRF. And I know there's now opportunities to do more collaborations around middle schools. Um but I also think that this particular issue is a persistent gap um that we have to go back around, how do we solve it? What can we do to get those kids up to grade level um as quickly as we can, understand what may be the source? Uh and this is a very individualized thing, it's not something that you're going to be able to come up, I think, with a one-size-fits-all. You're gonna need some very individualized interventions to understand what it takes to get those kids to where they they might need to be. And great discussion, I'll do anything in your mind after listening to all of this and uh going through it.
Um well, that was like such an interesting discussion. I was like the door man. But what I will say with outside when we have students, that's a little bit of experience. But what I will say about getting help in those honors classes is. I think a lot of the things put in place, at least in my experience, I'm kind of talking more about. Not students who are necessarily like getting F's or D's, but more like Cs, like getting by. A lot of the resources that are in place are kind of stuff you have to go out. And get like going to the tutoring center, no one's forcing you to go there, you have to do that yourselves, like. And like going and conversing with your teacher, not every teacher is necessarily doing that, I'm sure, every teacher, teaching title is different. So those variations, I feel like maybe like trying to interpret that, so it, so it's less of. Especially as a freshman, like having to go take that initiative, because that can be scary. And like having more resources that come in, but I will say that I think something that's very helpful is the. Freshman Leadership Unplugged Program, which I was part of as a freshman and now as a senior. And I'm in a math space this year and we get help students who are, it's not honors class, it's students who like are. Need to act show up in math and, and there's also students in study halls, so they get that extra support. That's also really important, continuing that, and that is like been ex- has been expanding, like some of the more disso- supportive that they're saying. That's.
Wow, great discussion, and you can respect that, like, why would these students don't get this part of our work?
And I I think that's such an important point to bring up, because that's, I've been chewing on the. The access to tutoring and services particularly, and how we, you know, just really need to. Need to understand uh where our students are coming from and what what they need. If the the hours that we currently have, are they working for the students that you most, where are our our what are our? Our, I'm sorry, I'm just, what are the alternatives? Um you know, should, can we have more online uh resources? Can we look at um, you know, um student sessions that are in not conventional hours with certified teachers? What does that look like? Can we look at offering things at the library on weekends, whatever it might be? I mean, just really thinking through this um and and being more responsive to this, like, it's so important. Um so I think there are a lot of areas to that, kind of something to be like.
So this is going to be great discussion, I am going to call a five-minute career break uh before we get to boss, we expect human developments. So thank you. Project, I'm getting a project two that should not be in the session, so we are going to move now to project two for the update. Um with with the. Everybody's in, I'm going to zip you babe, so it is all yours.
If anyone made it.
You hear which video was first?
The dashboard, or actually, you know, the drone or the video?
The, you have the both videos?
Yes, I have both.
And do the steel uh, I forgot you left the title, was it steel, steel?
No, it wasn't steel, it was one by eight fourteen, the one that stayed at nine nineteen.
Eight fourteen, yep. Hey, I, well, Lisa pulls it up, we've got a couple of girl videos that Gilane has provided. Uh it's pretty exciting, uh I feel like uh the last time Gilane was here, we we saw the building come down and then. We saw a lot of dirt moved around, I'm not sure what was happening, but now if you go out there and take a look, like, you can really see the projects that are coming together. Uh uh the videos, the the walk is the room, but they're pretty cool.
Two eighty-fourteen?
Yep. So this video here is us getting ready to set the major pool trusses that support the gym floor. Uh bigger than our review, I actually saw this happen real time, but. Yeah, these are the the largest pieces of steel on the project. Uh we assembled them in two pieces on the ground. And it drove a pretty large crane into the center of the pool pad. And then picked it up from the outside and set it in place while we had. Uh two record on either side at the end of the trusses, you can see the boom lift uh as the truss comes down. They, those guys are lining up the bolts to then get the truss set in place. If they were. Weight of those were eighty, about eighty-five thousand pounds, just for the steel members, plus the ringing for the crane. Were right around ninety thousand. And then um, yeah, they're a hundred and one hundred and two feet long, they they span the whole width of the pool. And they do support the uh, well, the basement floor, so. So there are two of those that those were set back in in August, so that was a pretty big moment. Um block planning into that day um for uh for getting well set, so that was a pretty critical uh crank that for us. Yeah, you can go ahead and show the next one. Next one's not quite as exciting, but it is a more recent video and just kind of gives an overall aerial view of of where the project is at. And this one's from, I think, last Thursday.
This one is now popping?
Yeah, so this video, you're looking at the third floor decking installed and shiny materials in there, so that's our third floor. We're starting off the deck, getting ready to do all of our MVP roughing within the slab, creating trades for concrete, which. Our first pour of that slab is going to happen tomorrow. Uh we're pouring the gemating section first. And on Monday, we have another pour, and on Tuesday, we have another pour, so we're. Trying to turn that floor over pretty quick so we can keep going, press the way up, it's a seal. It's something for, yes, at the third floor, yes.
It can be a wonderful, excellent base.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're we're fighting it early in the week, so yeah, we're looking pretty good here, this couple of weeks. Well, schedule wise, uh major milestones, milestones that we've placed, as we met with you guys, are obviously our foundation, they're complete. Uh we're vertical and sealed, we're off to the third floor. In some areas of the building, we have gone up to the fourth floor and set follow all the way up to a group. Our uh new water service has been brought into the site, as well as our geothermal piping connection from. New building structure to the geothermal football area, that's all been done. Uh we have started our. Full excavation work, you guys, you walk out there in parking garage, you kind of see down at the at the site. You'll see we started digging out for the pool earlier this week, so we're starting down the end where, you know, to show. There, you'll also see some of our interior basin wall down the basement, those are starting to go up, or on our way south to north. So we'll start seeing some of the rooms start taking shape. Along with that, all of our MVP overhead roughing and in-wall roughing, so mechanical, electric plumbing, all that. Stuff that gets hidden behind ceilings and walls, that's going along with masonry walls as they go in. Uh we did have some, might have seen in the drone, if you caught it or not, but there is a small section of the exterior of the building. Where that seamy block wall is starting to go up, that is what closes our building here. So we have that part uh going in now, we're trying to find other areas, but all the building we can. Get a jump start on, so try and beat some out winter weather that's coming up soon. Uh with that, we are, we've had a pretty good conversation with our trades, uh seeing where we can accelerate support, trying to combat that. We are looking to park parts of the building, get their temporary heat spread out through the building, this can start pumping in heat. But uh temporary heaters off the gas, we have set up. We expect to probably see some of that get set up here in November-ish, just be temporarily ready to go. All of our windows out there, that are future echo store front windows, you can see here in the room. Those get boarded up, so we'll start trying to close up every little gap. Check this one, I think, so, so that's it, it's not too cold, keep working. Uh from there, it's a little miscellaneous thing, we've got our switch here down to the lecture room, so that big giant electrical equipment that. Power up that second building that's already in place, that was early, so that's good. From there, the green room, the room that's just below the stage, we've started roughing. From there, the green room, the room that's just below the stage, we've started roughing out that room as well, we've already got some of our ceilings framed out down there too. But we are making really good progress. The building, we're making our connections to the northwest section of the building of the new structure, where we connect basically to the fieldhouse and the auditorium. Or it's a challenge, it's connecting new steel to existing steel, so everything we fabricated, we bring it out, and you gotta make a couple of adjustments here, so a little infield tweaking, it's taking us a little longer, but I think we've got past that Earl, so that's why we've gone up with steel, as we're progressing. With the concrete floor being poured on three, we will start seeing masonry walls continue going up vertical on that floor. That load bearing wall that's up against the fieldhouse, that's our west wall of our building. That supports steel, so we need to get that up as quickly as we can to finish out all the rest of our steel. And then from there, it's just following our concrete quarters, so we're gonna jump around a little bit as we pour the floors. Our second floor, you have noticed it's only half poured, we're still old west section of it, we haven't done yet because it's not on our critical path. We're trying to get building set, get a revon and then jump back down, start doing so. What you will see coming up here, delivery wise, is the roof choices above the gym. Not as big as the one you saw in the pool area, but they are choice, they're pretty large. So those will be getting delivered here soon, get ready to have those set. There's a lot of can't finish the columns, get the detail going, get that roof set, so from there, a lot of concrete shots, a lot of masonry, seamy block, get delivered. From by the numbers, today, we're putting about fifty-nine thousand man hours in place. Since we ended it last, it increased about twenty-five thousand hours that we worked. Our contract value still remains the same at the ninety-one, seven by seven. Complete, we've got about thirty-seven percent complete of the budget, cost complete. Our contingency bounce is at one point five, still remain the same as we met last. Our trade amounts around one point seven, that did come down a little bit since we met last. We're back to you guys. And currently, right now, what we have potential changes to interview, currently we've got a panel member for you, just shy of the bar about. Questions?
I saw the slide that roofing work is going to begin November. And so that just made me wonder about weather risk going forward. It sounds like you're, you're racing to make sure that everything is enclosed instead of like when we do that inside the building, we can do all the, is that the idea?
Yeah, that is the idea. Part of our contract with our roofer is that nearly ninety percent of the roof system is a temp roof. So when we get that installed, we will, we will be weather tight, rain tight from a roof standpoint. As the seamy walls are going up, like I was saying, we start boarding up our windows, we're going to start part of the pool area, so we have to get those somewhat of a weather barrier further from driving rain, wind, snow like that. We we want to try and beat the weather as soon as possible because obviously cold temps, guys don't work with this. Hold out, they will, just that then makes a whole other issues of getting it solved done with production, right, you start losing time, so that's the reason why we're kind of up against someone that we're racing to that.
And what's your level of confidence that you're gonna, you're gonna make it?
It's, I'm fairly confident we're gonna make it, I mean, we are, we're moving pretty quick now with steel, we've, like I said, we struggled a little bit there at that northwest corner, rounding this future elevator, maybe connection to existing building. But steel since that point has progressed really quick. We're getting these certain floor slabs forward, then there's nothing from, once again, of course, nothing stopping us getting the roof on. Where then it starts releasing trays, start building out the answer walls. We're, we have the entire month of October still. We're putting in a lot of work. Our trades, I think we're running right now, on average, about forty guys on site, I can see that doubling pretty quick.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll add a couple of things to that, so, you know, we know, we're all aware the project is further behind than where we initially anticipated it being. But there's a couple of good things that we're seeing with the market. We've, we've run out of the summer construction period, right, so we're seeing our trade contractors really hungry and looking for good fall and winter work, so we just had a really good productive meeting with our, our masonry contractor who is kind of the driving force for us, once we get concrete slabs and see a lot of the way and, and already putting a lot of work in place, but a really good meeting with them today. They're looking, they've got crews coming off of the jobs, and it's, you know, it's either they're gonna sit home or they're gonna come here, so we feel good about manpower available and, and actually a lot of our mechanical, actual plumbing trays, same thing, looking for, for homes for winter for their guys. So we're gonna adapt that from that. We bought a lot of these temporary measures that are originally in the bids, so the temporary roof, it really didn't, it didn't cost the district anything, honestly, it actually doubles as the air barrier for the roof. So that was a, you know, a good buy, that's gonna serve us really well to get us enclosed because the roofing is temperature sensitive, right, as are a lot of the exterior materials. So with that temperature sensitive, we can put down the, the temporary roof slash air barrier, and we can probably do the whole building in about five days with that. And then we can, as weather allows, we can actually build the permanent roof system and do that with, with the less fall of the mind, right, not having the kind of way, the total line on, on temperature restrictions. We've been talking a lot about masonry and, and the temperature restrictions with that, we've got a good plan for carpeting in the pieces of the building that won't, that won't be enclosed at that time to make sure that we're maintaining temperatures. We don't want to jeopardize quality, just to get the thing enclosed or to get the exterior breakfast hot on, right? So all of that is in good discussion. We have the board up with the windows already bought, we knew we wouldn't have windows in prior to window, prior to winter season, so a lot of things coming together, and, and I think, you know, as Jay said, we're, we're pretty confident in the schedule that we've got now. And we're tracking right towards the middle of July right now for completion of the addition, and we'll do the renovation of West School in the same timeframe during the summer of twenty-six, so. Yeah, we have a lot of work to be put in place yet, no doubt, but there is a lot of good progress, you can't really see it from street level, but you go down on the basement, locker rooms are starting to, to take shape, bathrooms are starting to take shape. There's a lot of, a lot of our major equipment has shown up, which is great, our elevator is going into certification next month for a July delivery, or excuse me, January delivery. So that would be bad. So we feel procurement wise, we feel really good, and now it's just about the work in place, so.
I appreciate what I think now. Any new risk that's sort of, that's now on your radar screen since the last time you were in front of us? Market, materials, not weather, but anything else that, that sort of is starting to pop up that's, that's starting to concern you?
Nothing else to mind to me, no, I mean, all of our major mechanical equipment, our air handlers, dehumanification, and all that stuff that's in Chicago and area right now. Kind of subsidy for customers, so we're, we're a really good spot from, from your standpoint, what we've had, your base for all the guys. Yeah, you're actually gonna see a lot of that mechanical equipment gets, starting to get placed into the building actually before the roof goes on, because we have to leave part of the roof out to get the mechanical equipment into the, to the fifth floor mechanical, so we're probably three weeks away from starting to put a lot of that equipment into the camp, or that way it protected, we will, we'll build a roof over the top of that, most of that, so much larger crane than what we have now, we'll be here to take that stuff off, yeah.
I just have one question on the spending variance, I can't, I can't quite tell when the chart with the monthly cash flow estimate looks like it's exactly tracked. For the, the monthly cash flow, if it's spent, looks like it's in fact, we've detailed it, it's in quite rich charts, like what were you meant properly, we're, we're spending the way we thought we'd spend?
So I can answer that. So, and the, the actualized months, as I'll call them, so anything that's been built today, the actual and the forecasted just line. It, it's not exactly, like, that wasn't the forecasted spend, but once we actualize it, they just align. So it's not showing what was projected for that month, right, so, so anything August in this one, anything that's got that blue bar with the actual in the middle, the actual and the forecasted, which is the red bar, they align, and then what happens is, so you know, August, the, the other thing I should note is the yellow is the original baseline cash flow from before we started the project, so a lot of things have happened. You kind of see that, that peak has shifted by a couple of months to the right. That's from the delays that have happened throughout the course of the project, which is what we expect to see. And then the other thing is, when the building gets behind it, it stacks up, so if, if our actual is less than our forecasted per month, it has to come in a future month, right? Whether it's next month, or three months from now, or six months from now, it has to come, so you start to see that push and some of that curve grow. And that's what you're seeing with the, the red lines jumping up above the yellow as you get further to the right, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, obviously, everybody can see the progress. But, but I really appreciate these, these reports. And they're thorough, they're, they give us information that we need, so thank you, and we're looking forward to the late December of twenty twenty-six.
You have any questions? Great, great progress, thank you for the updates and looking forward to seeing the whole thing close.
Oh, we should, we, we didn't note that, and hopefully you all have a chance to sign the beams as well, but we did have two beams that we painted white and gave the students and staff an opportunity to sign, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands of signatures are on that thing, but the, the one of the students signed is almost completely solid with ink, it's very cool. And those are actually, we set Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, and they're let's see, the, the overhead steel on the fourth floor that actually supports part of the fifth floor mechanical room on the north end of the building, so it's just kind of a nice little memorial, you know, eventually they get covered up and buried, but they'll always be a part of the building, so it's kind of, kind of something.
Can you talk about the change orders? Looks like we have ten changes, can you discuss, welcome to those, and if you can provide some help?
Yeah, so some of those are coordination items, some of them are more fine tuning, what the details have documents, just based on school days, what we can actually accomplish, and feel, etc., et cetera. A lot of those are going to end up, the ones that are pending right now, like, a couple of them are actual changes to the school, more of us giving accountability for our trade contractors, we like to do basically a true, that are getting managed a lot of security, what they're tracking matches what we're tracking, so having unexpected costs at the very end of the job, so I like to do those basically once a year and then fifth year as well, with a lot of those guys. But a few others is fine tuning to the scope, so acoustics, pool areas, one we're looking at right now. The Larch was driving this one, there's a large number for the, the two that are over, we did, and now we're making nice connections to the Geo field. Getting around that compact transmission line, so a lot of them are pretty reconciled, pretty small. This is by far right now our large one role was. But it's, it's fine tuned to what I think, whereas one where we can review internally and try and get this one pushed through. Just a point of clarification too, because I know you're from from my first day here, and our bar has been, you know, beyond time, beyond budget, the changes wouldn't be impacts to like that final total, and this is where those about a million and a half dollars allowance contingency come to play.
Thank you all. How do you move to the topic? More governance. And for, and for the government, I do want to move to just a quick updating on the board atlas, so there's additional information, looking at updates to our peer districts, and just thought I, I had asked Graham if he would just talk a little bit about those changes.
Sure, and in this meeting, we can just to thank Tony for giving us updated data, because starting on slide twenty-eight and yeah, we had up till now, only been showing comparison against our peer districts through school year twenty twenty-three. To put this together required us going through different sources, and Tony actually had him doing some annual work in order to capture a couple of districts that were super late reporting their information to the state. So glad to have that, it's now as current as it can be in terms of comparing how we're doing against our financial peers on a few key metrics, so slide twenty-eight shows our per people operating expenses. And I've added a little call out there describing where we are relative to the median of our peers. And you'll see, we're right, we're right close to the median on this operating expenses per pupil. You go to slide twenty-nine. This reflects growth of expenses on a five-year gager timeframe, and the peer group median is four point nine percent compounded annual growth rate over five years, and we're actually pacing below that, so that would say that we're effectively managing more tightly our expenses on a per pupil basis. Slide thirty goes into the operating expense category specifically salary and benefits on a per pupil basis. Here, we're a bit higher than the median. Obviously, labor is the largest expense category for us. So, so these are the, the three starter metrics that we're using for financial performance, and now that we have the school year twenty-four data, Tony, I'll be coming back to you for time to upload this onto our website, so it can be married to or be a sister to the dashboard information that we show on P two progress. Last thing I'll say about this is our financial peers, these benchmarks that we started set is something that we talked about through several CFC meetings and the upcoming CFC meeting in October, we'll invite CFC to nominate other financial metrics that they think would be useful and interesting to compare how we're doing to our financial peers.
And Buster Graham? Thank you for that, Graham. And the other topic for our conference is our goals, so I know that we're gonna get copies of the goals, those on the table here. So thank you to everyone for getting your goals fronted. We'll just take a quick look through these, because we also want to finalize and vote for it. Um, we'll just take a quick look through these because we also want to finalize and vote for it. So we have two things here. I'm gonna um kick off um on page thirteen, so we just been talking about facility and budgets. Um, and just take a look at the goals that we have here and with Graham or Fred. The downward like speakingities.
Um, you're having, you're you're going right to facilities and finance. Alright, so um originally coming out of our retreat, there were four potential focus areas identified as general category of facility finance. Two of them related to the budget. One was annual budget and budget process. The other was budget scenarios. Uh, focus area three was determine a go no-go decision around project three. The number four is the C B A coming out of the back. In confirming with my teammates, I suggested we consolidate one or two, uh, the two budget topics go into one uh focus area. And then we leave project three and the C B A as standalone items because they're kind of big mean leaders. So if you go then to uh it's gonna say it's it's like the here's how we just filled it down. Um, around the budget, a couple of smart goals. One is largely doing what we're doing anyway, which is uh following the C S C meetings in which the budget is addressed almost every C S C meeting. Uh, we provide that report out back to the V O E on the major developments or comments C S C had. Um, the other thing that we're gonna work tightly with the C S C um is on the structural deficit, which is something that was shown to us back in August where if you do nothing, you eventually get your fund balance down well below the twenty five percent uh minimum required policy. Uh, on project three, uh, these are all draft uh form at the moment. But we have a kind of a three-step timeline here uh by the spring initially to determine the P three project capex size plus or minus thirty percent. I I use plus or minus thirty percent because it's fairly common in the engineering world that that's one of your first uh sizing of red box kind of public. Uh, following that, as you know, in the spring, we built a capex capital projects planning framework. And what we can do then is take that um estimated capex size, plug it into that framework and then project and model out uh different financing mechanisms and what that could potentially mean in terms of uh fact on the taxing on on our levy, uh presuming that chances are P three would have to be funded through a referendum. And then by the end of the school year, get to that go no-go decision and or uh linking it to any kind of timing update on on whether project three would proceed. The last item here, category the C B A, um, just from a big picture standpoint, what we'd like to do is by June, which is when our current C B A will expire. We're at a fair and equitable, physically sustainable agreement that we can back the Senate. A new C B A that allows us to continue to attract and retain high-quality teachers. So those are the facility and finance goal area team specific objectives that we came up with Jonathan, Brad and myself have been entertaining budgets.
Well, I guess one other thing I'll say is that, again, because it's in draft mode, we will look forward to administration feedback for some fine tuning because I was plugging in some kind of placeholder dates and I know those are probably gonna need to get uh refined.
That will call, you know, probably be the case for all of us because we're looking at these. So thank you for that. And I do want to pause for a moment and just please to thank the wonderful ministry of team for saying do not have to say please.
They saw, they're all on top. Just like, oh.
I'll get you caught up on the goals later on, team.
So so what one this thing that I would ask here in 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 really, this is yes. We, I I don't know if there's a a timeline or you talked about that's highlighted for the department negotiation because it comes up really fast.
Yeah, but not not yet. Probably we're we're coming up and then also figuring out part on on this as well. So that's one of the things Graham and I have had some messages back. We, you know, so means, you know, knowing knowing the time is obviously, but though we have not yet done that, that is on us to do very quickly.
Ambus. Just an overall clarifying question about, so in this conversation, are we confirming that these are the goals of the month before you?
Yeah, that would be, yes. I want to talk to them that way and then just say if anyone, make sure they were all done with them. And then if they are, then we'll hopefully finalize them so we can get them for that in the date set, et cetera.
Great, great question.
Then can I ask one more?
Uh, sure.
So are we trying to cut them down? Like, do we have a target? What's a reasonable number of goals for the board in a in a school year?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, for goals, you know, and you hear lots of numbers, you say like five, but I think because of our A I, we talk about how we're joining. We actually, this is what I'm seeing right now. This is actually um not a bad number for us all, but if there are opportunities to consolidate the way Graham and team did for dinners and say the opportunity to consolidate, let's focus C B A. But we look to have um from common, we're probably about seven or about a buck, maybe between the you guys are three, I think that we do every time. At three as well, and then this that.
We had five.
I'm gonna guess at five.
But I think, you know, we're open to that.
Okay, okay. But you know, remind you, but why don't we go go into those, go into the ones that uh we have for academics um for achieve academic achievements online, our top career, and see where they might be on areas to.
Let's type team names. I'll I'll go first. Uh, so brushing for a little initiative. I don't know that we need to go deeply into that. Um I I think the the way that this is laid out, it's um it builds on um the presentation tonight. Um, there was a lot of different questions and feedback. And so I think that there's maybe a little bit of further uh assessment that that we need to or gathering of those questions that we need to do. Um, and um I, you know, I think a number of board members expressed the idea that um we really would like to to understand or see articulated um enhancements and supports um to the initiative. I would like to see that in your term. Um, and so trying to to have that happen during the middle of the school year so that we can take action um second semester and actually implement things that that need to be. So that's that's how this is like that.
Yeah, so just in the big picture, there were, so we had kind of a two-part um two-part area to work in, academic achievement and then also the school environment. So the first three goals are really uh really that we uh proposed here are the ones that are related to the academic achievement and and academic programming. So goal number two proposed um is to take a look at some of the career pathway options. So I do know that during conversations, um, you know, throughout the campaign, one thing that came up from the community again and again, those are real interested and excitement about the career pathways that are already in place, uh, as well as a lot of support for expanding those pathways and and just seeing what's possible. So I think I know I have a lot to learn about that. I don't, I don't you know, a basic understanding of what's in place now, but I think it would be helpful to um, you know, just get a good overview of how things are going so far as well as explore opportunities for extension if they are there. That was goal number two.
So definitely, that's my question for Greg. Um, is there something coming to the board or, you know, with respect to this, or is it something that you're talking about your team for this school year?
We have given reports in the past. I do not believe we have an exact one counted out right now, but this is a topic that has been a frequent one of conversations. I mean, before the school year, but certainly this school year as well. You know, we have more support and direct uh administrative uh kind of strategic development at this school right now because of the vision that we have
Right.
uh for for C T. So I think um, you know, knowing what Matt is working on and how he's working with those school districts to develop our our pathways is a great way to start. And a lot of these um we're doing kind of a a need to set kind of like, what's the current state of affairs would be really bad.
And I'm wondering, um, including that, you know, terms of the board's focus would be on sort of monitoring, but going out here and getting an update. And it's something to take off as a goal, weren't really kind of asked as an agenda, a gidget item to be something that we actually.
I think a lot of these are gonna follow that category, no doubt.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's part of the office, but you say, yeah, it's true. It's gonna say.
So I'll take the next one. So um I talked about A I last minute before. There's there's just, there are so many different A I related topics that that intersects with with the school. Um, and so I I rather than list them all, rather than try to figure out an action plan for each one of them, I thought really what what we need to do first is is gather and identify all of those those potential A I related things. Um, and I and I think that needs to be done between a board member or two board members and a superintendent, so it'd be someone from the D L T. Um, uh, who can help identify all things that are actually going outside the school already with A I. Um, secondly, then, would having made that identification list, assess and prioritize things that we can get to, things to, things that are happening now um that need immediate attention, um, things that are more in a, you know, in a monitored um area. And then, um, again, uh, as with the freshman grade ones, you know, let's identify things that we can take action on by the end of the school year. It, I I don't know what that list is gonna be. It's really driven by by the by the first term. That's the approach. Identify and gather, assess, prioritize, and execute.
Yeah, this is one, let's have a conversation about it. It's it's really important. And I think some of the things that you've mentioned here in this goal are ones that we are in the midst of, I mean, just today in a conversation with uh Dr. Hester, she shared, I mean, she, we import policy language, we have guidance documents that are being developed, we have teacher teams being talking about this as I'm like working last school year. There's a lot of information already at at play in the district. So um I want to make sure that if goal like, th- this is a critical area. This is, this is I mean, this is the critical area of education across the school. And I want to make sure the steps that are outlined here are gonna sink in the momentum that we already have at work rather than take us a step back in the process. And I need to, we need to think this through. I don't, I'm not saying I know that that is changing. I just want to make sure we are in harmony.
Don't get me into the next one?
Yeah.
Um, student safety perception success. And this really goes to something that we talked about in C C B over the last couple of years, and I credit Principal Parker for, you know, stating this really well. So this is something that the psyche of she uh has talked about, and I I think it's right on. Um, and that is, we, you know, we want to make sure that we are providing a safe environment for our students. We know that we are. Also want our students to feel safe, and that's where we struggle sometimes because and and I think Principal Parker would say is, we don't actually know what our students mean when they say they feel safe or unsafe. We don't know what they mean by that. We we think that we know what a safe environment is, but our students may say I feel unsafe because the hallway is noisy because they are for, you know, a variety of reasons. Um, and so the the idea here is really trying to get at that problem of what are our students actually meaning when they when they tell us that they are safe or unsafe. Uh, and it's just because that understanding may help us identify um things that we can do um to 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 make them feel more safe. Um, so it's, this is a a thing that, again, we've talked about for a while now at C C B. Um, Principal Parker, I know, has been concerned about this, and it just seems like this lingering issue. And maybe through survey instruments, focus groups, um, what have you, maybe we can wrap our arms around, um, you know, but uh what's how students actually perceive.
Any, you answered that. The the uh fifth item on the list may also be be more appropriate as an agenda item, so uh welcome to feedback on that. But I think it would be helpful to say have an overview of the professional development plan for the year so that we can understand how that aligns with various aspects of our policy, and in particular with safe school resolution. I know I had a line item about ensuring professional development for everyone in the building. Um, so I think the goal here is just making sure that we are aware and up to date on what's happening in terms of preparing the uh staff and faculty in a variety of ways.
I would say sync with the bargaining agreements. Well, there certainly are some, there are a variety of professional development, staff training uh requirements every year, either by negotiating in order to policy, generally, if we're driving towards that. Um we, I think the way that it intersects probably more directly than that and meaning the the professional development experiences is determining the amount of time and space we have to do. And so um it's worth exploring more there, but we certainly have every year the challenge of a finite, re-refined amount of time to do an ever-growing number of 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 the other bands. So um talk more about that, sure, but that's really where it intersects. Yeah, I was just kind of very straight. So now we do, they're bargaining for like subset time, right?
Yeah.
Or for machine on that. How much do you already have? Do they have to do that a lot of time first? I would say this is crucial, right? The, you know, students can't learn their physically, or what should say, but but uh would something like this be impacted by the next round? Oh, I see. If we negotiate for more professional.
Questions, thoughts on back for for this set of goals?
Beginning with this, you asked, somebody asked, uh, how many are too many goals? And I look at this list, it seems one through five, I can see you know, freshman curriculum, that's a big strategic, you can see that as an example of goals. Number two, I can see that, you know, more of all, as changes in the economy and college, where it was, trades are great opportunities. Number three starts to really direct into administration stuff, although perhaps there's a policy application to number three, A I. Four and five feel super ed. And those can almost be, uh, anybody, one day, when I add something to a future agenda, we say, we want the administration to report out this. This is the board really gonna get its hands dirty with a student survey and stuff. So that's my, maybe it's a little devil's advocacy on on this particular list. And and number five, I mean, that's P D content. I mean, I can, I can see telling administration, give us a report on all the P D uh the teachers are getting and what are you doing to address safe school resolution? Another thing where you just say, I want to add that to the future agenda items. So I guess my question for you to throw this to the team is um, if you really want to bite off all this as officially board goals.
So let's make one through three a call. Tim, thank you. Oh, she's three. Well, I guess maybe one, two, sure, Tim, thank you, right?
Well, I guess maybe one, two, three, thank you, right? So. This is. About the policies as to. The. Say I.
Well, this is the Catholic and Tim, you can definitely attempt to.
Yeah, we're saying that Tim and Josh are on the, um, policy, so there's a policy, um, application for this.
I think that could be fine. I think, I mean, I think it makes sense to make number five a reported professional development. To make that an agenda item, I think makes sense just as long as we move the goal. The goal then be make sure we put it on the agenda. We have a work update value. Yeah. Yeah, I, I might push back on the student safety perceptions only again, because I know that's another big, um, point of conversation in the community. Um, and I, I think if there, I mean, whether a survey is the right way to go is a good question, but it shows up on the kind of essentials, right? I mean, I think perceptions of safety in the building, um, I would argue that's a really important point and helpful for us to know something more about or, or think about a little further. I've been, you know, new here, so what's an agenda item, what's a board goal? Um, is a little opaque to me still.
Yeah.
Grandma, Grandma, I think that's the first point I would like, you know, we, Greg is just seeing these, you know, for the first time tonight. So I'd love for the, the, for him and the DLT to also to, to think about these things and give us feedback.
Yeah, I think I was gonna suggest that because I would say, you know, when I'm thinking board, number two could be something that could be a good report. So I would love to give the feedback as well, right? And the, and the team, we actually, I'd love that you all, your kind of see. Because I think the important thing though, whether it's, uh, you know, the board goal, um, Josh's point, I think they've got more strategies that we're driving. Or if it's a future agenda item, they should be doing our role of governance monitoring and just making sure that it's someplace where the board is talking about it by putting back on it and being able to see what's happening there would be, uh, would be important.
Okay, that's a great thing.
Let me quickly go to communications and, and just sort of pretty important to, like, I don't think Paige is here to that very well, if they don't want. Um, so what, when we, when Josh and I started talking about, uh, what would be around communication, there's really, uh, I would say an evolution and continuation of even just what we started doing last year. And so, you know, we were, we wanted to really continue to make sure that we're engaged in the community and have at least a couple, um, uh, two-way forums. And so we talked about, um, listening posts and the board being like two-person, where members want out to the community and being able to, out to people who are just having them come here, will be on a formal meeting and have OMA requirements. Uh, even idea perhaps of hours, um, is something where someone wants to like email a board member or type of a board member that we have in our schedule of ways of, of doing that. It is something that we do on both, in both towns, both, all parts of the course, um, by, by this rank. So just, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll put that out there. And then, and Greg, we turned up on dates with this, but we started looking at data around the precincts that were least engaged, um, against baseline data last year. One thing we didn't have last year that we have this year is parents' worst, we don't have a baseline for how that's going.
Yeah, dude.
Um, as well as being able to say, how are we doing against what we had against our baseline last year? So we look at numbers, recent changes. And then also we looked at the lowest, you know, kind of engaged, uh, precinct from a parental standpoint and all part of the people of course. So we need to do that as well. We want to make sure that we've got full data, looking at both towns and being able to say where, where are the opportunities? And what are some of the communication things that we've done as a school district are starting to make a limited difference, at least with the things that we started addressing last year. And then finally, um, just looking at, um, community, none of us can make, as a community organizations that we can probably perhaps to do some engagement with the board and, and share. So that, that's the other piece. And then what I included in here are some things that we had also started doing last year, but different in schedule about, you know, like what are we going to do for our engagement plans? This is just a initial layout. We can continue to, to adjust it. Um, but what, what do you want to do when? And then also, um, working with, um, Greg and Karen, um, when Greg goes out to the community and look for opportunities to join him. But also look for opportunities like we did at back to school, like, um, I had, um, a couple of individuals there. Brad and I were able to be at the city, um, learning fair, but right. So look at things like that where we can be engaging the students and parents and other, um, members of the community. Jess, anything else that we've, I'm just, we talked about?
Yeah, I think we wanted to pull in, right, like the end goal of, of community engagement, one, we show as many appeals that, that, that the gap here are. It was. Their, their source. Uh, two, uh, when we talk about the targeted engagements, wanted to see and to make sure the metrics that or, or at least explore metrics that we're using to measure how engaged, uh, uh, general people is. Is that translating to? So is, so that engagement, is that, is that, that success and, and all that, right? How much of that can, can us going out there, making those tools workable or be successful lead to, and to driving the results of, of, of increase, you know, uh, connection with the student. So I think there's. How we compare it to. Tech, it's like. Just one last. Both of these is where, so there's, I was kind of, us take. And understanding, right, why that qualitative iteration, right, you know? System here, uh, across certain. Channel, so we might have, uh, thought about.
I just want to talk about one thing you said earlier. I, I, I made this a bit acute. I think you've ever said that dashboards that we developed is kind of a proxy for parent, community engagement. Did not include the workforce?
They did not. Well, we, you know, we're maybe amped and ready to pull them off, basically. You don't have.
They did. I just wanted to talk about, we have that for the last two school years.
Then we should call that in terms of.
Yeah.
Well, and one is also, one thing I guess also, didn't want to explore. I forget for students.
Oh, yes, we have. And I know Greg, you're from work, you'll start it and I will, I was saying, well, I, I had, I done a problem, was probably about what we were doing with transfer students and parents, because I know that's effort underway.
It is, and that's also a future agenda item already. Um, I think it was Tim, but it requested that after freshman on track one. Um, and so, um, that, that's in the works.
Yeah, that's in the works. That's common.
And I think actually to Graham's kind of categorization before, I, I just saw what it's worth. I want to double down on that categorization. I think that, you know, if it is something that is largely going to be designed and executed and reported on by the administration, let's make it a future agenda item because it makes it clean. Uh, it does, and it has no, I, I want to clarify to our thinking as an administrative team, it has no bearing on the level of import that we give to it, right? It's just, we're putting it in the right bucket. Um, if it's not going to be something the board is going to actually do themselves, like the communication and engagement while listening tours, that's.
Clearly, that's, yeah, clearly. And so I, I think that division of labor is really valuable for us. So. That's fair. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, well, so two things, perhaps in great with you and your team is just either input on some of the goals and thoughts about how we're doing things for all, or, you know, feedback about dates and uh, timing would be very helpful as well.
Well, we'll definitely.
And bring that back to us. And then if anyone's, you, if you have any other questions about, about, please just send to me. I can get things solidated, um, and go and hopefully get towards the final stage for our next onboard meeting.
Can I add one thing about communication?
Uh-huh.
But as I mentioned, I knew here, but one thing that definitely is the thing I have at night already is the way that we receive as board email communications as well as the public comments. And I understand our protocol in terms of answering those. So I know, I agree that you, um, you reply. But I wonder if it would, with, and then if we add listening tours, then that, that'll be a lot more information coming in. So I wonder if there might be, you know, part of a goal in here, which would be setting up a system in some way to kind of categorize the things that we're hearing. So we know, you know, have we heard that particular concern one time or 10 times or a hundred times so that we can get a, a sort of better sense of the, um, extent of the, extent of the community engagement with different topics. Uh, I think that would be really great. So, you know, then when emails are coming in, you know, people are getting a response, but in addition to, in, in answering the responses, thank you so much for, for sharing your concerns. Uh, but I think it would put my mind at ease if I knew we were also logging that. So we did the philosophy of those.
Exactly. So I hope that, but that, but that's, that's, that's very fair. And I would think, again, we're just saying, um, as you're saying, I'm thinking back to what we usually get and I'll, and they tend to be very topical, you know, kind of based on what's on our agenda and, and, and what's going on. Uh, but one thing that I really have been trying to commit to is responding to lots of, so sometimes thank you for your methods, but this is they're asking there, I always respond. So the gentleman who spoke about, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, who, um, spoke at our last board meeting. And he had a question about what was happening with the convergence.
Right.
And so I made sure I got back to him today, but for the notary period, but make sure we get back to them with, uh, ask the chief what they're asking.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's something that we definitely try to do in doing. But you're saying that my, I think probably we had a system just distracting us if something's coming in and things that it could be helpful as well. But I do try to keep track of that and make sure. Yep.
Would it, would it like, on questions? So, oh, like, some events are here, uh, something.
Yeah, that's something missing, like something to your point. I'm thinking like, what, I'm a Google driver, I can do something, that's a simple spreadsheet. So we're trying to keep track of, uh, what is, came in and stuff like that. So we might figure out something, uh, again, easy, but I'll, I'll add that to. That's great. Thank you. That's what I, that's what the track is.
You organize all that, you're going to get another recognition at sites.
Yeah, I know we recognized it earlier, but thanks to everybody for everything we've been doing. It was really great to get the recognition uh, for our board governors. So it's something, so we'll get a pen for those who are going to the, to the conference and know who we recognize again in spring. So we can say that we've done. And then our last topic for tonight is maybe, um, just our updates for our reports. I, it is late, but I just sent out updates, the report for IGOV, um, last time as well as for, um, we have the magic foundation. But is there anything that anyone thinks is important for the group to know about any of the meetings that they were going to over the past month?
Um, so I have two kind of plugs. Um, so I attended the, the first Apple meeting. One of the big things that was, I'm, she, um, she said that we used to get really, really large turnout, like very significant turnout. And it was, you know, it wasn't Instagram, but, but, you know, maybe 20 people or so in the room and, and and certainly not enough to represent, you know, Black people that are, that are involved in school. Uh, and so one of the big pushes was, you know, to make sure to try and engage more the more individuals to, to become, you know, more engaged and participate more in Apple. Um, so, you know, she did call back that we talked about changes in our curriculum, the changes in our, you know, this is. Those all really do affect the Black community and it's important that they, uh, heard and, and it was, so, uh, just kind of like a overall push for that. Uh, there, the next Thursday, uh, seven o'clock at night. Uh, the next day, for Apple is the. Uh, it's. The, the, I, 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 all that, the colors.
And behind nine, I have a Black patrice tour.
So. So it's going to be Tuesday, October 7th, 7:00 PM, um, at the high school, right? Penn, Columbia, Harvard, Dartmouth, Yale, North Carolina, Princeton, Spalston, Terry. I need to be there. So I think it's pause, sorry, pause, okay. Uh, a few things that are nice to report on pause is one, there's been a, a return to kind of updating the policies of the clause. Really smoothing out some of the finances, getting a bookkeeper, uh, trying to really politicize. I mean, yes, I'm pleased to see. And then other part is that Saturday, uh, this Saturday, there is a sale, which is a big reason why some can't buy scales. The. The dinner greenhouse in FA, this Saturday, we have to bring a fire, which we can set up, sell it against the street. Fire, let's, uh, proceeds to.
And when, and when I've lost, thus their, their flat sales, um, you know, it, it used to be pretty good for them, um, and, and, you know.
And that's, you know, that's, that's something for trips to.
Right.
Oh, there's just a 30 second plug for the sustainability committee had its first meeting. Uh, it was a really fun meeting. There were a ton of students there. They were so enthusiastic and so passionate. Uh, and it was great. And in addition to that, I think Greg, you maybe want to say a little bit more, but there's an initiative to revise the district's sustainability plan.
Well, there is a new group working cross-agency in the district. It's called CASE. And this group is, uh, something we started last school year, it's District 97, the village, me and, um, uh, speaker. And, um, I agree, Gary Knead. And, uh, through that effort, we really identified four main areas we want to focus on. And that has led to a revisit of our sustainability plan in district to make sure that we are providing effort that's aligned with the overall village focus. Doesn't really jettison to anything entirely that's curling there, but it does mean that we want to maybe shift our, our focus. And so that work is underway. And I should also say that, uh, I believe of the sustainability team is, or, 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 it's voluntary, it's time. In additional ways. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, so CCB, um, we, uh, uh, our first meeting, uh, I'm sorry, uh, we had our first meeting dedicated to, um, um, gathering around, like continuing the work that we were doing, like, um, convergence. Sort of reset with INWES, um, terrible name for. Sorry, I, I would cheer about it. But anyway, INWES, um, and, uh, um, we, uh, uh, did have a pretty good showing of, um, community members there. Um, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what. Not sure we accomplished much in the first session. Um, so I'm eager to see what the minds had. I don't know if you have anything to add on that, Tim?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, it was led a conversation trying to identify, um, norms, um, in the effort to help school prepare for the next extracurricular crisis. And after a meeting with the community members, that was the first phase. Um, and plus this meeting with, uh, faculty and the meeting with students. And we will come back to us with, uh, with recommendations. It's empty already.
And then, um, let's see, the community council we had, um, it was very much, uh, a get to know you type of session. Um, it was a kind of, uh, highlighting some of the, uh, the, uh, recent, uh, big moments, uh, in the Opura community, things that parents might want to know about. Um, it was an introduction to Dr. Hester, how to get to value of Dr. Hester. Um, and also, um, uh, an, an opportunity for, uh, parents present to, uh, pitch ideas for, um, uh, for agenda items for the community council meetings going forward. Uh, did I miss anything, Greg, is that big?
That's pretty good, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, we've yet to have, uh, collaboration for early childhood meeting, but I think Lisa is looking at, like, November, is that correct?
Um. Working with the, um, those, this waters, we sent out some dates, uh, last week, um, ten of the dates.
Okay.
On the IGA board committee needs and in the tribal, we should, we're trying to, it's very funny, it's over here at the high school. So I had somebody in, I was gonna make sure that dates work for you, I think, to you guys to reply back to me. So I'll fill in the rumors waters and this rules for the ninety-seven, if you don't speak, now, okay.
And then the, um, the working group that we've, um, that we have continues to need and, um. It's, uh, it's exciting, um, so working on that. Um, but that's, uh, yeah, that's.
We haven't had anything, but. And I think I'll add, uh, I got more to come, but I'm trying to figure out how to have a centralized hub. Uh, perhaps as a library, um, web, a library website, where all the government entities of all parts have a place for storing information, connecting things that we have through IDA. So there's some exploration going on for that right now, and then I put it in the message I sent out on the update. But with the magic foundation, they have a number of events coming up over the coming months and just supporting them as they're raising money for, for school. Finally, are there any future agenda items? Other than just a conversation we had, I'd go, asking Greg and the team to go back and just kind of give us off, so.
You know, I, I think it warrants to have a, a, a discussion about, um. You know, the requests of the group that spoke tonight. Um, they basically have two requests, number one is that the creation of a committee. Um, that, um, is an input towards, uh, curriculum and achievement. And the other, it has to do with additional supports, I believe, right? It is, so I, I think, um. They've, they've, they've narrowed the focus, and, and I think it warrants us to have, as a board, to have a discussion. Of, of, you know, where, where we are with it and how we can engage with them. And this is, uh. The first time in a long time, they, they've come to us with, with things that are really actionable on our part. Um, not just, you know, kind of complaining about what was, was out there, and what's going on. But, but actually giving, uh, asking something of us and giving us some direction, so, you know, I would like to have that discussion.
So I have a general question, just based on, just, just sort of bake a conversation on tonight. Where, where is everyone, what kind of feeling is something that should be employers for, kind of, where do you hit about that? Because we had some similar final comments that came out of the, um, various, you know, just various feedback, you know, from us and questions to the team. Um, the reason, I, the reason I'm asking is that, firstly, it being just discussion with us, I don't want to discuss in a vacuum, but this work, we wanted to wreck the, you know, the team to, to actually. Look into what are they enjoying, what are they thinking about, what are some particular options, so we can have a whole, wholesome discussion. Around what might be some choices and things to do, but it sounds like some things are already underway, so, uh, where my head is, that I'd like to maybe have Greg see, gain a little bit deeper. Um, to help us to set up a better conversation.
I, I would say that's where it always, that's where my head was with that board goal, I guess, well, with the question, with one issue, I, I think, I agree with you, so both of the things that were proposed. I think warrant further discussion by the board, but there's a, a, a longer list of things that I think, you know, we heard tonight or different programs and suggested that. That I know, I want the administration to, to think about and come back to us, I don't, I, 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 I agree, I, I think, uh, you know, a longer, um. For discussion and chance for us to, to think about a number of things as a part of that, really like to see that happen. I just don't know what the right vehicle is, if it's a, if it's a board agenda item, or it's a board goal, or, uh, when the administration brings back a, a new board item.
But that, what, what it fit into, as you said, that was basically the goal around, for, that, that, that we have.
Yeah.
Like, I'm sorry, well, I have data communications, anybody here, bro.
Yeah.
Well, so, so one of the issues on screen. Call. The national score. It's, 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 I think, that's all time, so, purpose is, you know, is it, is it, do we need to create a new body? Or is it just a matter of, I see kind of the, the, the way and the access and making it more open and available that this area is, is, that there was some concern that, you know. We aren't being heard and that we want, we have stories to relay, experiences to relay, and staying with yours, and they're easily out for that, so.
May I jump in for a second? I probably have a place here, um, but if you just give me a little bit of leeway, what we're doing right now is exactly what we would do the second time I would bring this to the board. Right, we're having a discussion about whether this is the thing to do. Right now, we're naming topics, then we'll, uh, and that's, that's a process we have before, if we're changing that process, I think we should clear, but, but I think process matters, so it's definitely, yeah.
So let's name the topic.
I have it on my list already.
And let's, and let's come back, and, and what I will do, uh, are you, are you all okay with that, like, to, you know, put a follow-up process, name it's topic, have Greg and the team come back to us.
Yeah, and you've already got a few board members assigned this topic of freshman curriculum, so it's same way Tim and I met with Greg about faculty demographics.
You can have a attempt, and actually.
Work in order to, uh, to, to, to.
And, and what I will do, because, um, is to just, you know, do a follow-up, like, that's our catch, the community members who spoke at public conference night. And Kathy, that appreciate them speaking, we heard that, we'll be, you know, we'll be doing some more exploration, and we'll be following up. So we've given, it was awesome to know that we're not ignoring them, uh, but we also just need some time to be thoughtful about this as well, yeah.
I'd like to, if it's possible, to maybe have this, David, or, 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 or steering, kind of, give an update, um. Maybe not immediately, but at some point in the future, uh, what kind of results we've seen from, after, versus, since. So, I'll like, you know, just, they, has that, we have a practical, uh, here, so. Go to.
Any items? Okay. Gary, man, this is your last chance, right? So I, I will really move to adjourn at eleven oh nine PM, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye, we need adjourned.